We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you could do the roll call, please.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Aye.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Ettinger?
Here.
We would rise for the invocation. We have Pastor Kevin Schultz with The Vine Church with us tonight.
As the pastor of The Vine Church, which is a new church in Coeur d'Alene, and being also a new resident of Coeur d'Alene, I'm really happy to be here. And thank you for the privilege of leading you in prayer and asking God's blessing on your meeting tonight. Let's pray. Lord God, be with these men and women tonight as they serve our city with their time and talents. Give them an awareness that they are God's servants, whom He has given to us and to our city for our earthly well-being and government. Bless them with the wisdom and courage to do what is right and just and fair, along with a spirit of cooperation and humility to work together for the common good. I ask you to graciously protect them and their families, keeping them healthy and safe. And according to your wisdom and love, prosper our communities, prosper our homes, and prosper our hearts in ways that only you can do. I ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Woody, do you lead us in the pledge, please?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a couple of changes to our agenda tonight. The following items will be removed from the council agenda under Other Business. Number one, authorizing the allocation of $50,000 from the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. And the second one, the Council Bill number 17-1034, the complete streets ordinance. Those will be taken off the agenda tonight and put on at a later date. And then we have an item that we need to add that will take council action to add this item to the agenda tonight. So we'd be looking for someone to make such a motion.
I'd like to move to add, under Other Business, Council Bill 1701038, a 1412 annexation agreement between Scott Stevens for 1354 Silver Beach Road.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, just to clarify, this isn't a whole new item. It's just kind of a piece of one of the items that was on our agenda.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. So the next, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution number 17-071.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. Now is the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. Anyone wishing to come and address the council? We have some items. We have a public hearing later that people will get the opportunity to give public comment on that specific item. But if anyone has any general comments or questions that they would like to make at this time, they're welcome to do so. And we have three minutes to do that. Not seeing anyone, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight?
Oh, oh, I got one.
You did?
So we gave away this iPad to a lady, all these people who took the survey for the checking out government television on Channel 19. And she hasn't responded. So if any of you guys know Diana Jackson, tell her that her iPad is waiting for her, being a good Christmas gift. And so we're kind of out there throwing her name out because we didn't get phone numbers. And we think maybe her email might be going to spam or junk or one of those things. So if you know Diana Jackson, at Roadrunner, that's all you get. Let her know, okay?
Thank you, Wood. Anyone else have anything, any announcements tonight?
I do see an abundance of students here this evening. Not that it's near the end of the semester or anything, and that they're required to attend a public meeting, but thank you for showing up.
I have an appointment tonight. I would like to appoint Ashley McCormick to the Arts Commission, so we'd be looking for council action there.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we will move on to our other business item. This is Resolution number 17-072, annexation agreement with Scott Stevens for 1354 Silver Beach Road. This is pursuant to council action way back on August 7, 2012. And maybe, Mike, if you could give us a little bit of an update on how this is. I know government can be a little slow, but this took five years to get to this point.
I don't know that you can blame government on this one. I think the applicant, there are two adjoining properties, and they're served by one well. And one of council's requirements was that the adjoining property owned by an older woman was to be addressed, a joint well agreement was to be reached. And I think there was some difficulty getting that done. But then you might ask the applicant about the rest of it. I think he would testify with a straight face that we've worked pretty hard to get this one across the goal line, even though it's taken a while, so.
So we would be looking for council action on this annexation agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval. Dispense with the rule and read the Council Bill 17106.
You actually have two action items.
Yeah, we want to do this one first, Wood. We want to do the resolution. We want to do that one first, and then we move on to the next portion of it.
Y'all see me on a good day.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm way ahead of myself.
Right there.
Thanks. Motion, motion to approve Resolution 17072, approving annexation agreement Scott Stevens for 1354 Silver Beach Road.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be opposing this. I oppose the original annexation, and I believe it sets a bad precedent within the city where we are agreeing to annex in property without the requirement of hooking up to water and sewer. As Woody, as you often say, one of the reasons you annex into a city is for water and sewer services. And not this particular property, but properties in the future now have something to point to if council approves this tonight to justify not connecting to water and sewer. Therefore, I would urge council to reject this request.
Any further discussion? Woody?
Is there, Mike, can you talk to that? This goes back five years.
Right. He's on his own water and septic. There is sewer out to Silver Beach, out to where the Marina is. He's welcome to connect to that. The expense would be fairly significant to run a pipe from his property to our sewer line. That is one of the reasons why people typically annex to the city is because then they do get to hook up to our sewer line. But in this case, he's got a functioning septic system and property big enough to support it, so.
So can anybody just annex, want to annex if they have their own well? We don't require water and sewer?
You could require it, but I, no, usually bumps up against Panhandle Health. The reason why people annex sometimes is because their sewer, their septic system has failed. And Panhandle Health won't renew their permit to redo the septic. And so they will say, they will annex in, but.
Interesting thought.
Any further discussion on this item? Ron?
Yeah, Mike, this gentleman's been waiting five years to get annexed into the city of Coeur d'Alene?
Well, council approved the annexation five years ago or whatever. And then one of the conditions, again, was to reach an agreement with his neighbor so that she would have assured well service. She didn't want to annex into the city. And so council said, all right, well, we'll annex you, but we don't want you to cut this woman off from the well, basically. And so they had to work out an agreement for that. There were some issues with this property originally constructed in the county and perhaps didn't meet all the county building code, so they had to do some things to meet city building code. There was a issue about the ingress and egress and getting an easement from the road out there to get into the property. You know, all this are kind of standard requirements that council said, yeah, we'll annex you, but you need to address these issues. And it's taken the applicant up till now to figure some of that out.
Ron, I'm having a flashback. Are you remembering some of this?
What's that?
Are you remembering some of this that you talked about?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It had something to do with the building codes, right? That's what really brought him. Okay.
Any further discussion? Dan?
Well, I guess just that, I guess I wasn't here when you did that, but I, Dan's argument is making, you know, resonating with me. I think that it ought to be an awfully compelling and unique reason for us to, you know, take on annexation if it doesn't fit the normal criteria. So I don't know if there is any more history or if that, I mean, what is the compelling need without rehashing the whole thing?
Well, you've already annexed, agreed to annex the property, subject to an annexation agreement that would contain certain provisions. We now bring you an agreement that contains those provisions or has been complied with, so.
So what happens if not enough of us vote yes on this?
So then the annexation would not go through. It's not, it's not annexed till it's published, the ordinance is published. You know, I think it's a complicated story of the building being built and doesn't meet county setbacks, I think, but would meet city setbacks. And so we're trying, I think it could be characterized as help this person to solve a problem without tearing the whole building down and starting all over, so.
Woody?
Well, I'm just thinking, this was just added today, correct? There's no, there's no packet, there's no packet here for these guys to kind of see the history, the discussion that went on, correct?
There was this staff report.
Just the staff report, but not the guts of it, the history, any of that, right?
Right. And this wasn't really my item to bring forward, but I.
We always go to the attorney when we have a question.
That's right. Again, it has been approved for annexation by city council, subject to an annexation agreement being completed that contains certain provisions. And that's what we're bringing you tonight, is that annexation agreement.
So I'm wondering whether, because we have four of the seven up here that weren't here then, I'm wondering, and I'll just throw this out, now we do have a motion and a second, just to throw this out. Would the members of the council that were not here at the time like more information before we move forward on this? So would it be a good idea to table this and bring this back when you guys have been brought up to speed on that 2012?
I would appreciate that. And it sounds like there is no urgency if it's been waiting for five years to fall into place, so.
So, Renata, maybe you can give me a little guess. So there is a motion and a second. Would we, if we wanted to go in that direction and table this, Woody would need to withdraw the motion? And then we could, do we need to have a motion, another motion to table it for more information?
I believe the person who made the motion and the person who seconded would have to be amenable to pulling that, that motion and then make a new one.
I'm good for that. Who is the second, Ron?
Yeah.
Let's hope we don't have to wait another five years.
So you're good with pulling that, Woody? And then you want to make a, do you want another motion then, Renata, to table this and bring it back at a later date?
Okay. So I will move to table Resolution 17, am I reading the right one now? To table, thank you.
Right here, Wood.
Council Bill 170038.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, I'm going to table that.
Table the resolution and bring back more information at another date.
So we have a motion and we have a second to that. Any further discussion on that?
Do we need a date, certain date, or just when the staff has it ready?
We'll kick that back to staff, and then they can put it on a, on a future council agenda.
I'd also.
Go ahead, Kiki.
Sorry, I'd just like to ask that we have kind of a legal opinion on, is there a precedent set by doing this that would have a negative impact on the city? Be part of the report.
Yeah, I don't think there's a negative precedent. You can do either, go either way anytime you want to. I think there is maybe a pending sale that's driving some of this, so we may try and get it back to you in two weeks. But we'll certainly try and address your concerns.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other further discussion? Renata, would you like a roll call on that? Okay.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried. Now we'll move on to the public hearings that we have. The first public hearing is a legislative hearing. It is the vacation of 20 feet of emergency vehicle access easement located between Lot 8 and 9, Block 1 of the Greystone subdivision. Council Bill 171035. Dennis Grant has the report for us tonight.
We have two vacations tonight. The first one is, the applicant is Shay and Eric Wallace, and they are requesting the vacation of a 20-foot emergency vehicle access easement. Showing on there, it's in the Greystone subdivision here in Coeur d'Alene. And with this vacation, there is no financial impact to the city. The fire department has stated that they do not need this easement any longer and do not recognize it. So the neighbors, it's been fenced off and landscaped for quite some time, and this is just a formality to go through to make it official. So staff recommends that the council approve the vacation action per Idaho Code 50-1306 and to vacate the noted easement to the applicant Shay and Eric Wallace. There was 24 certified mailings that went out. Two responded, one in favor, and one not.
Questions for Dennis? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dennis, did the one not say why?
I believe I did talk to her on the phone, and she was concerned, in the past, that was fenced off, and she just knew that that access easement was there. And I told her that's the reason why this is happening, so to allow that to happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dennis? Now is the time we'll open public comment. I had just one person on the sign-up list, but they did not wish to testify. Is there anyone that wish, would wish to testify on this issue? Does not look like there is, so I will close the public testimony portion of that and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, move that we dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 171035 once by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Sure. Council Bill number 17-1035, An Ordnance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating an Emergency Vehicle Access Easement in the Greystone Subdivision. Recorded in Book I of Platts, page 492A, Records of Cootney County. Generally described as a 20-foot emergency vehicle access easement lying in the southwest quarter of Section 6, Township 50 North, Range 3 West, Boise Meridian, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, Cootney County, Idaho. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt Council Bill 171035.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call again, please.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to our next legislative hearing. This is Vacation of Good People Condominiums Platt, Book K of Platts, page 106, located at 1421 and 1423 Kayla Court. Council Bill number 171036. Dennis, you're up again.
Thank you. The applicant, Ann Anderson, on behalf of Charles Olson, is requesting the vacation of the Good People Condominiums Platt. Back in the mid-2000s, there was a lot of condos that happened, including duplexes. And we had one here, I don't know, six, seven, eight months ago, that the reason that they want, they basically want to revert from a condo back to a single-family sole proprietorship there, ownership, back to a duplex. So that's what the purpose is. There's no, there again, there's no financial impact to the city. And staff there again recommends the city council to approve the vacation process per Idaho Code 50-1306 to vacate this property to the applicant.
Questions for Dennis? So we would be looking, oh, I'm going to open the public testimony portion of this. I don't have anyone signed up on the sign-up sheet. Anyone in the audience wish to give public testimony in regards to this item?
Mayor?
Yes.
I did send out 26 certified mailings and had zero responses.
Okay.
So it makes sense.
So if there's no one that would like to testify on this subject, I will close the public testimony portion of it and look for council action.
I would make a motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 171036 once by title only.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill number 17-1036, An Ordnance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating the Good People Condominiums Platt, Book K of Platts, page 106, located in the southeast quarter of Section 12, Township 50 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian, City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I would make a motion to adopt Council Bill 17-1036.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call again, please.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
Motion carried. We will move on to our final public hearing tonight. This is legislative hearing again. This is short-term rental ordinance, Council Bill number 171037. And this is Sean Holm, who's going to give our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My PowerPoint up in the air. All right. So we have the vacation rental ordinance in front of you this evening for your discussion and whether or not you decide to approve, deny, or table this item. We have worked on this for almost two solid years. There's been a couple of windows where during the summertime, staff gets very busy, the vacation rental companies are very busy, so we let it lie fallow during the height of the season. So there were some goals that we had set out in the beginning to look at as we crafted the ordinance, and these are them, rather than read them into the record. I think everybody can see what they are. It is important to know, to let everyone know that currently vacation rentals are not legal in the city limits. We do have House Bill 216 that comes into play on the first of the year, and that will allow them to be, or they're looked at as residential uses by the state. So this would help the city comply with House Bill 216. So the key issues that we looked at, these are the items that came up. We talked about, researched, and looked at, built into the ordinance these key issues: occupancy, parking, length of stay, exemption, management of how vacation rentals would be managed, how they'd be advertised, and then the enforcement. Our efforts to date, as stated earlier, we've really vetted this item over two years. We had a joint workshop in the beginning. That happened in the beginning of January 2016. We put together a survey and opened that up. We had over 600 responses to that survey. A good number of them, more than 50%, said that they would support an ordinance. Then we had the draft ordinance and public comment that we brought forward in October. There was a lot of great discussion there as well. We had the Planning Commission workshop and public comment in February of 2017, followed shortly thereafter by a joint workshop where we discussed at length ADUs and the legality behind it, the way that the city currently allows ADUs to be built in the city, and some clarification, I guess, requests of how we would deal with ADUs if they were to be allowed as vacation rentals, which the current code that we are bringing forward does allow them with some, with some requirements. And then a Planning Commission recommendation, April 2017. And there's been some time since then. And here we are in December, right before House Bill 216 kicks in, and we're requesting that you take a look at it. So the ordinance here, at a glance, this is some bullet points that was provided by email to our list of over 300. This was sent to city council, as well as Planning Commission, and posted on the website. As stated just a minute ago, this is consistent with House Bill 216, which goes into effect on January 1st. All short-term rentals within the city would need to apply for a permit, and none of them are grandfathered. There is an exemption that would be allowed that's defined inside of the code. Basically says that you're allowed a total stay of 14 days, and that can happen within two, two periods within a calendar year. They need to post all of the permit numbers on their advertisements, and it's not transferable. And so if the property is sold or the owner moves to another property, it does not go with the owner, and they would need to reapply. So it does set the standard here that a minimum stay of two days, so no single overnight stays up to 29 days. Anything over that is considered a typical month-to-month rental. We discussed that already. Discuss that. Oh, advertisements, on all advertisements, they'll need to post their permit number, and that's a way so that we can check whether or not they, they do have a valid permit.
Sean?
Wow, that's a, I might have copied that twice. Yes?
Before you get too far in there, 14 days only, and then right on this slide, it says two days minimum, up to 29 days. Am I missing something there?
That's for the exemption. So if you, you are not a vacation rental or considered a vacation rental until you have rented more than 14 days, or in those 14 days, within two stays. So you can have someone stay two days, and the next time, 10 days.
Okay.
You kind of run out of your timeframe. Anything more than that, and you would have to apply for, for a permit.
Okay. And then on the two-day minimum, two days, what's behind that?
So we had a pretty lengthy discussion about having a minimum two-day stay. What staff had found out, I believe we ran this by you guys, it's probably been a while, but we found that the. but we found that the most of the problems that cities have seen across the US with vacation rentals are the one-night stays. They're usually a bachelor party or something where they're only going to be there a very short time period. I think Terry Nash also spoke. Another red flag that they tend to see is where multiple occupants are trying to pay for the bill. So you have three different credit cards going on to the stay, and that's a red flag that maybe something, something is going on, they may not be the highest quality occupant. So yes, in staff's wisdom, we decided that a minimum two-day would be a good thing to prevent not only, not only issues in the neighborhood, but potential damage to the short-term rental units themselves.
Thanks.
Sure. So it also does require that there's a responsible party that is available while the unit is being occupied. It provides a 60-minute window for resolution. It doesn't necessarily mean that the owner has to go on site, but they need to get a hold of whoever the occupant is and whatever the issue may be, and have them cease and desist prior to contacting our police. And that is basically a relief mechanism for the city so that we're not getting called out. It gives an opportunity to the applicant or the owner, the responsible party, to take care of the issue prior to involving city staff. So inside of the unit itself, they need to post emergency contact numbers, as well as an escape route, and this is applied on each level. So it's basically like a fire escape plan that you would see at a hotel or motel. So certain information needs to be provided to the occupants, that safety plan we were just talking about, a contact for the responsible party. We have a good neighbor policy, as well as the trash days. Okay. So one of the things that we discussed was occupancy. It seemed the most, I guess, vetted and existing code that we already have was to regulate occupancy, just like any other unit in the city, which is the definition of family. See, no storage or signs. The outdoor storage, we've had a couple of questions about this. What we're looking at is, we don't want to see like pods sitting out in someone's backyard while the owner sticks their stuff in a pod. Nothing is to say that, that we would prevent, you know, a Ziggy shed or something to hold stuff to take care of the unit itself, like mow the lawn and things of that nature. So this also does regulate parking. A parking plan must be provided to the city and to the renters. Basically, what the code says is that an occupant must use any available parking prior to parking in the street or in front of neighbors' homes. We do realize some of these units don't have parking, and so that wouldn't apply, and street parking is first come, first served. So this one, this portion of the code will allow one unit per owner, per parcel, to be rented as a short-term rental. So this prevents multifamily from turning into a pseudo-hotel. It also protects the neighborhoods from having multiple units on a single parcel be used as vacation rentals. So it's also important to point out here that new construction after this, if it is passed, would require that an ADU provide a single stall. If there are enough stalls on the site already, we're not going to require an additional stall. Generally, for 90-plus percent of the city, that is two stalls for the principal dwelling unit, and if this is passed, an additional one for an ADU. They would also have to pay an additional impact fee, which I believe I had the cost on here, it's a little over $1,700, and that would kick in. The one slight tweak that we had since the previous version was put out is that we had a requirement to notify neighbors, and that was written to be within a 100-foot buffer. We deal quite a lot with public noticing requirements in the planning department, and we realized that that could become difficult. We'd probably be answering tons of questions about, well, where do we start? Is it from the door? Is it from the property line? Where, where does that 100-foot begin? So we took a look at Portland. They had a pretty simple way of dealing with that, and we decided that we would run with what Portland requires, which is everybody across the street, to the side. If it's on a corner lot, you get the kitty-corner property as well, so that all of the properties that are surrounding the site would be notified. All right. With that, staff will end the staff report. I'll stand for questions, if you have any questions, and then we'll take public comment.
Questions for Sean. Woody?
Just on that last thing about the 100-foot. So what if I had three houses all close together? Would it go out 100 feet from all three of them?
Well, that, we changed from 100-foot to what you see up here, which is directly across the street. So basically, like if, if your unit is in the middle, it's the donut hole, you supply notice to everyone around you, rather than 100-foot, because that can, sometimes it doesn't get across the right-of-way, sometimes things are shaped oddly, and that doesn't...
Sure. So what if I had two places next door to each other? Would that change that, or is still the two on each side and across the street?
We, our advice, and we take this advice ourselves, is when in doubt, send it out. So if you think that it's possible, I would provide the neighbor one. They're welcome to call us. We can pull it up on a map and take a look and give them a definitive answer. But in general, when in doubt, send it out.
So there is no restriction of having multiple units in a block?
There is not.
Okay. And the reason? You guys had to go down that path, didn't you?
We did go down that path. We took a look at another municipality north of us, Sandpoint, and they do have a buffer yard requirement. So we had built that into our code, and it required, I believe it was within 300 feet, staff, staff was made aware that that was not the best answer, and so we took it out and reposted it, and here we are.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions for Sean?
I have one.
Any.
Does a required safety plan escape route need to be approved by fire?
It does not be, need to be approved by fire. The same for the inspection of the unit itself. There's going to be no city staff that's going there. It's going to be up to the applicant to self-sign off on that.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, the, your staff report refers to the good neighbor policy. What is that?
It is basically a tri-fold. It's largely, and I can pull it up if you want to take a peek at it. It is on the city's website. Give me a second here to get there. This is a copy of the good neighbor pamphlet. It is common language, basically saying to respect the neighborhood, loud parties are not okay in case of an emergency, who to contact, 911, give city health contact information. Talks about occupancy, respect, where to park, and policy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So going back to an issue that I'm sure will come up a little bit during the testimony, we're talking about two-day stays.
Correct.
That's not a state code. That's just something that we thought of, and I talked to someone earlier about that, which is the troublemakers are the guys who stay one night, and we're picking on bachelor parties. It's fine. How does this seem business-friendly to restrict to, I mean, there's, there's lots of people who do stay one night. The only, the two times I've stayed in an Airbnb was for one night, and both in Seattle. And I know other people who've done that, who stay one night. I don't see, number one, why that's an issue. Do you, so do you have a documentation that shows that it's an issue, that shows that there's increased police calls? For example, increased complaints to one-night stays? So I'll shoot that question at you.
All right. So as far as documentation goes, I do not have documentation with me on that. The, the response or the input that we received at the Planning Commission level was that one-night stays are akin to hotel-motel use. The, the planning commissioner that talked about it called about, called it turn-and-burn. It's what, you know, one-night stay, it's, it's a lot of work to turn over a house that quickly, and felt that it was more of a hotel-motel-type stay. So with the input too, from Terry Nash, and he is here tonight, he can speak to this as well if he wants to, but one-night stays, and I've talked about this already, they tend to, they, that's, and it's not, that, that happens all the time, you know, it's not 100%. But the problems that they have seen is with the one-night stays. Also, and, and I brought this up at Planning Commission as well, I'm trying to think where it's at, I can pull it up, but it comes from the state of Idaho, and it was a graphic that described how long people stay when they travel in Idaho by vehicle when they're on vacation. And over 92% of people stay for two days or greater. And so we felt that, you know, that 8%, 5% to 8%, depending on how you interpret the graphic that came from the state, that that was worth foregoing to protect the neighborhoods as well as the units.
So in one, in another respect, the government would be restricting the number of customers to these businesses, cutting out 8%?
Well, they're not businesses, they're residential uses, according to House Bill 216.
We can quibble that all day long.
Right, but...
The two-day stay also, I believe, so what we're doing is we're, we're saying, oh yeah, you can run a business, but we're controlling you, and we're going to push the overnight stays. Not all of them are evil. Turn-and-burn, we're still talking of an outfit that's making money, so they are a business. Turn-and-burn, I mean, it's, it seems derogatory to me. But we're basically pushing business into the county where the B&Bs do not have to operate under that rule, and to the motels and, and hotels, which don't have to operate under that rule. So it seems, it seems a little unfair, and we'll get into that more, I'm sure, during the, the public testimony. So let's talk about self-inspection. Can you give me example of anywhere that self-inspection has actually worked?
I am not aware of a city that has required or allowed self-inspection in this case.
And so I guess the other ones do city inspections.
Other cities?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and what is the, what was the reason that we chose to do self-inspection over city inspections?
There's a number, there was a couple of different reasons. One is the amount of staff time that it would take to do that. We are, you know, we're pretty tight as it is right now. The second reason was the, the liability that staff would take, or that the city would take on by taking, by going and doing the inspections in case something was to happen. And we didn't feel that it was a great use of staff time, as well as going into a home and saying, your handrail is an inch off, fix your handrail. Your steps are not correct, fix your steps. Now, what we felt was the important items which we have built into the self-inspection was, can you get in and out of the house in case of emergency? Do the windows, are the windows egress if they're in the basement? That sort of thing. So that's, that's the reasoning behind it.
And I think that would be important.
Yes, absolutely.
And I guess, so what we're talking about here is money, which is, if we did want to have city inspections, the permits would be more expensive.
Absolutely. And that is part of my research that I did recently. I got a couple, and it wasn't very many, I think it was two or three emails that are like, oh my God, why is this so expensive? And I looked at some other cities, and initially, it looks like our costs may be slightly higher than other areas around us. But what you don't see is the requirement for those inspections. That's another charge. There's usually an application fee, you have to pull a separate business license. There's, there's about four or five other things that other cities make you do above and beyond what we're just calling out as a single fee.
Well, enough about Spokane.
Okay.
I do have a question regarding the, so the donut, the thing that Woody asked you about, so you're notifying your neighbors. Is there anything your neighbors can do? So, you know, you find out the home next to you is going to be a vacation rental, so what do you do at that point if you're the neighbor?
It provides you the contact information for the responsible party in case there's an issue down the road you have a contact to get a hold of.
So that's, that's the point of that, is so that they, because they're going to be the ones who would complain. All right. I just wanted to know why, you know, what, so they're going to do a vacation rental, then, yeah, can I stop it? No, but you can get the phone number. That's the point.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Dan?
Well, related to that, you know, because I've got mixed feelings on this and concern for the neighbors, and I'm thinking, okay, if I was one of the immediate neighbors, I'll get this, you know, slip of paper with their name and number, and then, two months from then, okay, now we've got the loud party, where in the world did we put it? It's 2:00 in the morning, and I guess, is there any, something I would really feel much more comfortable, and I don't know if you talked about it, but I think it would be a good idea if there were, like on the city website, all of the locations marked so they can look up, okay, it's between 2nd and 3rd on Garden or whatever, and they can click on that, and boom, there's the address, and there's the contact information, and so that then they can for sure get it anytime they need.
Right. And we did, we did discuss this. It's a blessing and a curse. On one hand, having that information online so that an aggrieved neighbor can contact somebody is great. On the other hand, if you allow that access to anybody, the vacation rentals, and we've heard this, it could become targets because people of, I guess, there's no other way to say, criminals may target those homes if they know where they're at, and they know that they're not occupied at certain times, because vacation rentals aren't 100% occupied. Now, neither are homes, obviously, but there's more times where vacation rentals sit idle, and they could potentially become targets. That's also part of the reason why we said no signs in the yard, not only because they're not really sightless, they don't make a yard more beautiful, but because they could potentially become targets. It's...
Other questions for Sean? Kiki?
Or Ron?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sean, thanks for the time we spent the other day.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Cleared a lot of things up, and I appreciate that. I found another thing on my note. When someone rents an Airbnb, and then there's a city permit attached to it, I kind of get the feeling that that lends them some sort of sense of security, that they're safe, and it's, that there's been a process that's happened. So I'm wondering, as we're discussing, that there's no inspection to assure that there's actual fire exits, and it's all a self-inspection, what's the liability that the city, city could be putting themselves in by not covering that part within the permit?
That was a discussion we had at length with our legal team, and it's a great question, and I really appreciate being able to talk about that. We felt that by going there and doing the inspection, if something went wrong, that there was more liability than actually having the applicant go through the checklist and sign off that all of those elements are present, and that it is a safe place, and signing under penalty of perjury that it is accurate, rather than taking the staff time, having to charge additional, you know, by doing some of those things, it puts off the process of when we can actually issue those permits as well. It's just a, another time inhibitor.
So part of the permit does have language that assures that when the owner of that property signs that permit, they're assuming the liability to be accurate with their checklist.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ron?
Who's going to be policing this?
Like, who's going to, like, go to a house in the middle of the night that is having problems?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. So the first 60 minutes, you have your contact that you call the responsible party. That responsible party has 60 minutes from that point on to try and rectify the situation. The citizen is encouraged after that 60 minutes, if it's not taken care of, to call the police, and then it becomes a police issue. It's important to note that once that, that happens, that is reported back to our deputy city clerk, who then, that is the first strike in... who then, that is the first strike in the rules under here. So if you, your first strike is not that big of an issue, the second strike is a misdemeanor. So that's how the penalty is handled. Third time, I believe, the, it can be revoked, the actual permit can be revoked.
Sean, a follow-up to that, someone that is operating a vacation rental without a permit? And someone finds the procedure for this, you find out somebody's operating it, they're not permitted?
That then does not go necessarily to a police officer but to code enforcement at that time. So Sean Youngman would be notified that this is operating. Actually, the way that we built our fee structure, it allows some time for Sean to actually do some research, which helps the people that are complying keep that competition at bay and keep those, the ones that aren't complying to come into compliance so you don't have that uneven playing field.
So code enforcement issue?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Sean? Sure, we'll probably have some a little down the road.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
So we will open up our public testimony portion of this. I have 16 people who have signed up on this list. Nine of those 16 have indicated they wish to publicly testify. I'll go through the nine that have signed up to testify. If I get to the end and I hadn't called your name and you do wish to testify, we can add you towards the end. So I'll start off here with Holly Hanson wishes to testify. And your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Holly Hanson. I own 730 and 732 Military Drive in 805, or 807 La Crosse in downtown Coeur d'Alene. And I'm also a real estate agent here in Coeur d'Alene. So I represent a lot of clients and friends who have also purchased homes to have seasonal homes and vacation homes. So I guess I kind of speak on behalf of them as well. So I live on North Military Drive. That is the redheaded stepchild of the Fort Grounds out there, the dead end. And we've lived there for many years, my husband and I, and we've seen a lot of change on this street. We have a lot of college students. Now, I went to college at North Attle College and the annex of Lewis Clark State College and I lived there through all of that. And the change that I saw was as a college student living in one of those homes, there were other college students around me. I was the responsible one that maintained my yard and made sure the house looked good because my parents owned the house. But the ones around me didn't. Fellow college students with raging parties that lasted until 3:00 at night and then they didn't necessarily take them inside in the middle of the summertime. And my husband and I still live there and the years that we've been through this, having a long-term rental on our street has been a nightmare versus vacation homes. Now thankfully, I'm surrounded by one, two, I think there are three or four vacation homes on that side of the street now. And it is more quiet than it has ever been. And the houses are maintained and the front yards look wonderful. And the people that stay there are lovely because they're on vacation and they're happy. The times when we had long-term rentals there, they weren't always necessarily college students because my husband was able to go knock on the door of the, of the college student place and say, look here, calm down or we're going to have a problem. But sometimes they've been families and the same thing, the yards aren't maintained, there's dandelions growing, there's a car that has been abandoned that's sitting on the street even though we have parking permits down there. So I'm all for the fact that I would much rather live next to a vacation home than a long-term rental any day. And I can say that from 15 years of experience in the heart of Coeur d'Alene. To address some of the things that have brought up, I've taken some notes. Parking issues, there are a lot of downtown homes where we only have street parking. And vacation homes, you know, if there's two bedrooms, two baths, we tell, we're now managed by Vacasa after all these years. But it stated, this is where you park and you're only allowed to bring this many vehicles and be respectful for your surroundings. And by the way, hang this in your window because you need a permit to park here or you need a ticket. And they follow the directions. Sometimes they take the permit with them and then they mail it back to us and that works. When there's ever been a long-term rental on, on our street, okay, and it's a, say a two-bedroom or three-bath and there's only allowed to be so many people living there, sure, there's that many people living there. But then their boyfriends stay the night, so there's that car. And then they have a friend staying because they're homeless for a couple of weeks and then there's that car. And then there's the random person that came for a party and left their car there for a few days because they didn't have a chance to come back and get it. So there's so many more cars when it comes to long-term rentals than there's ever been for vacation homes. As far as notifying the neighbors of a vacation home, okay, sure. But I think the neighbor's going to know that either that home that just got purchased on my street is owned and lived in by a caring neighbor or it's a vacation home because they've spent money on it. The yard looks good, looks good all the time, the outside is maintained, there's cleaners that show up at least, at least once a week. It's nice looking because if it's a long-term rental, I can guarantee you that the rental property management company, again, speaking from experience, is not going to show up to make sure that the lawn is mowed and there's not junk out in the front yard or couch sitting on the front porch. A couch sitting on the front porch, which happened down the street from me for at least six years. And as far as the two-night stay, you know, I, I think that's great because I have noticed from experience again, that a bachelor party actually, where one guy got thrown through the window next door was an experience. So the two-night stay kind of keeps out the partying riffraff. I agree with that. Sure, I, I have stayed, I used, I use a Gota and Airbnb, I travel the world using these. And yes, I stay one night. So I guess if I were to come to Coeur d'Alene and I looked up on vacation rental sites and saw that there was a minimum night stay in most vacation homes in Coeur d'Alene, I'd go to the Holiday Inn Express. That's fine, because they do have suites with little kitchenettes. When you, as far as the neighbors having our phone number or the rental property management company's phone number, I'm going to give you a prime example. The vacation home next door to me was managed by a local rental property management company, I'm not going to state names. And when it was rented out as a vacation home by them, which was rare because they didn't do a good job doing this, there would be an issue where a lady showed up and her key didn't work. Or we're calling because we're like, holy cow, there's so much noise going on next door. And instead of calling the police, because we don't like to bother them, we call the rental property management company, good luck trying to get them to call you back. However, ever since Vacasa has managed that same house, call Vacasa, call Matt any time of the night a day and he's getting back to us. So vacation home rental is a lot more responsive, whether you have the owner's name or the rental property management's name than any rental company that works nine to five or nine to four. And then registering it on a site, just saying that the city has no legal obligation and that this is just a list of homes registered. The fee that is associated with this, you know, when someone wants to make a vacation home a beautiful place for someone else to stay, their success is based on reviews. If someone stays there and their experience was horrible, guaranteed, they're going to write about it. Now, if their experience was wonderful, there's no guarantee they're going to write about that. They're just going to go, well, I was expected and they move on to the next place. But if their experience was horrible, guaranteed, it's going to be written and smashed all over Facebook. And the next people that go to rent there are going to see that, they're not going to want that. So if, if you say, well, how do we know, how do we protect, you know, the people? Don't worry, they're going to figure it out because they're going to read reviews. And if it's a new vacation home, they're going to look really hard for people to have good reviews, so they're going to maintain it. So you don't have to worry about the city taking care of that. And the fees, I think I read, I don't know, the first time fee for a vacation home, I, 200 and something and then 100 and something after that every year. More fees for vacation home rentals when they've spent so much money maintaining with cleaning and yard maintenance and all this kind of stuff, we're adding more fees to that, which I do not agree. A fee for saying, yes, I have a vacation home in Coeur d'Alene, I agree. $50, $60, like when I go to report that I have an in-home business and I have to sign up and say I have an in-home business and I'm going to pay my fee for that, I understand because there's a certain amount of paperwork and stuff that goes on. But I think the amount that was discussed in the last email I read is a bit much. So that's all I have to say and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Question for Holly.
Yep. Holly?
I have a quick question for you, Holly.
Sorry.
So you're not against people living in rentals?
I am not against people living in, in long-term rentals or short-term rentals.
Thank you.
I just wish that the long-term rentals were better maintained.
Holly, I have a question for you too.
Yes, sir.
Tell me what the economics is of a long-term rental versus a vacation rental. So a long-term rental, you're charging month-to-month.
Mm-hmm.
Vacation rental, you're charging by visit.
Mm-hmm.
Annually, what's the difference in income? Or revenue, I mean?
So revenue for a short-term rental is better. Because I would say more than nine times out of 10, I can walk into my vacation rentals and my friends' and customers' vacation rentals and you will have never known that anyone stayed there, even though they had two dogs. You'd never know because they respected the place. So your wear and tear on the house is a lot less. Not only that, it's being cleaned all the time and you're maintaining it. So the cost, even though initially, if you, our downtown wouldn't look the way it did if we didn't have the money coming in and the people remodeling and making these look nice. And the only way they can afford to do that is, yes, they might stay there in the summertime, but they need to rent it out perhaps other times of the year. So I think the income for a short-term rental and less wear and tear is a lot better for short-term.
So if you're going to advise one of your real estate clients who wants to speculate on property, you're going to recommend that they run a vacation rental as opposed to a month-to-month rental?
Depends on where they purchase.
Location, location, location.
Location, location. If you're going to buy up in Coeur d'Alene Place, that's not going to make a very good vacation home. But if you want to buy downtown, it's going to cost you a lot of money to remodel. You're going to have to think about egress windows and other things that go with older homes. But the return on investment making it a vacation home is going to be a lot better long-term as a short-term rental than it is a long-term rental.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Torgerson?
Tom Torgerson, 4808 Fernand Hill Road in Coeur d'Alene. And I'm the president of the Coeur d'Alene Association of Realtors. Wanted to make a point, these are not necessary, but I understand that they're fashionable. And first, Dan, with all due respect, I, I don't understand why the city needs to be involved in the economics of a private enterprise decision or how that would sway anybody's opinion one way or another. Just a little curious, just a side comment. And I would say too, so this has come a long way. When, when myself and Idaho Association of Realtors, our legal counsel and our head lobbyist, John Eaton, we met with Sean and with Randy and of course with Hillary. And where this started was in a way different place. It was exceedingly restrictive and your Planning Commission agreed during that presentation. And this has been pared down very significantly and we appreciate it a lot. It's, it was very, they've come a long way. The, there's a few different things, I guess, first of all, and again, having to do with capitalism versus governmental control, I don't think that there should be any minimum number of stays, it's two nights or one night or. I, I think that market has to predicate that. If, if an owner wants to turn it over, let him turn it over. Most of the vacation rentals that I see, they have minimum two, three-night stays because they don't want to do that. But there are times, I think Councilman Gookin had stated himself that he, if I'm not misstating, had stayed one night. And I don't, I don't see an issue with that. In, in, on page 2D, under responsible party, responsible party shall mean the owner of a residential dwelling being used as a short-term rental as well as any person designated by the owner. Are we trying to have two people be accountable or should that word be or? So that's a question that I'm trying, I think it should be or with regards to that, that's one point there. Understand the accessory dwelling unit and with regards to those that were already in existence, and the mayor and I, I think, touched a little bit on some of these aspects of the ADU a long time ago, how they're kind of grandfathered in, even though it says nothing is grandfathered, with regards to impact fees that they don't have to be. I'm mildly concerned actually though that the six-month clause for ADUs subsequent to the adoption of this ordinance, where it talks about the requirement for an immediate family member or the owner to occupy for more than six months of any year, what, what are we going to be doing when they're not? A lot of these, a lot of these, you know, we're, we're kind of a high-end transient community. We're a Sun Valley, we're a, you know, we've become a Sun Valley, a Jackson Hole, a Park City. I, I, again, start to, trying to police how long an individual owner is or isn't in their own home seems a bit onerous and maybe stepping out of the bounds of, of what the city or any governmental entity should be doing with regards to that. Are we trying to say that we have to keep it vacant then if the owner isn't there? Or what happens if an owner isn't there for six months of the year? There are many, many, many homes here that the owner isn't there for six months, whether or not you have an ADU. So that's, that's kind of a concern for me. The, also, with regards to duplex and multifamily housing, I, I'm concerned and confused on a couple of things. So there are many little neighborhoods that have several duplexes in them. So if, if I own four duplexes for a total of eight units, do I get four units that I can rent? Because I own eight units. Each of those has its own parcel number. Each duplex will have one parcel, so I have four parcel numbers, I should get four rentals. I want to make sure that that's clarified. That's how I read it, but I don't think, maybe that's what some people are thinking along the lines of this. In addition, with regards to condominium, I certainly understand apartments. I know what they're trying to do and it's good. With, with an apartment building that has one parcel number and we're trying to not allow an illegal hotel to be made, and I concur, I mean, that makes sense. But condominiums have, all of them that I know of and certainly any of them that have come to fruition and been built recently, have pretty stringent and active homeowners associations and they almost all address this. Those individual condos have their own parcel number. Each condo has a legal description, a parcel number in a condo plot. They don't have one parcel number for the whole building. So that needs to be further clarified. It seems to me that if you own four condominiums, if the HOA allows it, you should be able to rent those. Those have individual parcel numbers. Let the HOA decide that. I mean, it just seems like it's, it's a lot different animal than, say, a duplex or with a single parcel or an apartment building. On page, and this is the big one, on page 6, I've discussed this with a couple council members, with the mayor, with planning, with Jim Hammond. I'm exceedingly, on page 6, the top of the page, item 1, the maximum number of overnight guests accompanying a short-term rental shall not exceed the definition of family. I really didn't want to bring this up in public hearing. I, I think it's exceedingly risky to define a family nowadays. I, I would personally urge the city to eliminate any definition of family anywhere. There are so many different angles of it. I believe your code even says the maximum number of people that are in a family, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I, there are so many different ways to generate what has become known as a family. I, I hate to see the city potentially open themselves to liability with regards to defining one. That concerns me. The other thing that that does, and, and I've done this, I've done it out of country, I've done it in-country, you get two or three couples together and you want to go stay at the same place. This doesn't allow that. That's crazy. Those are the type of people we want here. You want a couple, a couple of families that want to come over here and enjoy Ironman or, or enjoy the Fourth of July, whatever. You can't do that. You've got to stay in a different place. That's part of the fun, is being together with your friends. And for some reason, we've precluded that group of people or those groups of people as friends of staying together. For some reason, we think that they're going to cause a problem because they're not blood-related. So, and, and that's really about it. But that one really, the policing issue is a whole nother story, but you guys can hash that out. It's going to be difficult. But, but I, I, that, that is my biggest concern. And that's a legitimate concern, more than just a desire of how something should go one way or another with the family.
Okay.
And I can take questions without my glasses, Gavin?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Hi, Tom.
Hi.
I've, I've heard your name before. I've heard your name before. I agree with you on family. I questioned that during one of the workshops. I said, "That just doesn't make sense." You probably use the same description you did, which it just, especially in our dynamic society, you cannot define what a family really is. You know, could be people coming here for a family reunion, in which case, they're all family. So, it seems dumb that we even go there. I agree with you on the one-night stays and on enforcement. But asking a question about the downtown areas specifically. So, when you're selling someone a real estate and you're going to sell them something as a vacation rental, do you agree with Holly that you would sell in the downtown area? You would say that would be a better investment?
In terms of other areas within the city?
Yeah, if you were going to sell someone a house and say, "Here's where you want to put a vacation rental versus here's where you want to put a month-to-month."
Absolutely. I mean, the access to downtown, to eateries, to bars, frankly, to the beaches, to the shops, to Tubbs Hill, to the Centennial Trail. I grew up at 1018 Front, three blocks from here. I know what this place was. I know what this place is. I mean, we've changed dynamically, you know. And quite frankly, Sanders Beach, when I grew up, was kind of a rat hole. Probably 65% of the houses were in need, serious need of repair. I hung out in them, and I grew up there. And now, it's become quite different. Most of those people that lived down there were mill workers at Potlatch. And everything has changed dramatically. And a lot of people talk about affordability and downtown, and those words are not anywhere in the same neighborhood. And again, it's just happened. When somebody spends, I've seen now $180,000 to tear down an old two-bedroom house for a 50, 500-square-foot lot, there's nothing affordable about that. When I started back in this in 1993, you could pick up almost any two-bed, one-bath downtown in what we really called the downtown, not clear to Harrison, truly downtown, for under $40,000 in 93.
My point in bringing that up is, I live in the Fort Grounds, which, of course, was at one time, the other side of the tracks, literally. And the issue that I'm hearing from my neighbors is that the overpopulation of vacation rentals in the downtown area removes the word "neighbor" from the word "neighborhood." So, you end up not living in a neighborhood anymore. You live in what's effectively a commercial zone. And that's a concern for me, too, because one of the things that does make the city great is being part of that downtown vibe when you live here. And because of this, you could call it gentrification or whatever, but the fact that we're converting these, what were smaller, single-family homes, into vacation rentals is destroying a lot of the neighborhoods and the integrity of them, because your neighbor's, the guy to the right or the left of you, is now a vacation rental. And that's one of my concerns. You mentioned Jackson Hole and Sun Valley, and those are other places where people just really don't live there that much because it's become so expensive. So, that's one of my concerns in bringing up this whole thing. And one of my concerns, when I started approaching the city years ago about the vacation rental ordinance, is that, you know, unless you put a cap on this thing, pretty soon, you're going to be the last person in your neighborhood. And I wouldn't want that to happen. I do recognize what you said, which is that things change. You know, this is dynamic. Everything's dynamic. Things may change. And that may be the future, is that, you know, the whole downtown area is surrounded by a buffer of vacation rentals. And that may happen. But I do hear from my neighbors, and that is one of their concerns.
My personal belief and that of the Association of Realtors, both Coeur d'Alene and Idaho, with regards to private property rights, frequently usurps my own desire for what would happen in my neighborhood. I live on acreage, but things change around me, and I don't necessarily like it, but I have to respect it. And so, it's... You also are controlled by the state law that just went in, which specifically prohibits, you know, restricting. You can regulate, but you can't restrict these. So, and again, I understand, and I feel for it. I mean, I have, there's a lot of things that I would change that my position in general needs to, you know, kind of overpower. But I understand. And it is, it's an issue, it's a conflict.
I appreciate that you understand that.
I do, totally.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir.
Want to let you know.
Kiki.
Tom, I just wanted to clarify what your position was on the six-month clause. Are you against the requirement that it be owner-occupied? In other words, if there were two properties on, two structures on one piece of property, and one of it was a long-term lease and the other was a short-term rental, you would be okay with that, but not the mandate that one of them be occupied six months out of the year by the owner of the property?
Well, yeah, it's complicated. So, it says, "Once the impact fee is paid, either the principal dwelling or the ADU on the property must be occupied by a majority owner of the property or an immediate family member of the property owner more than six months out of any given year." One, or what? Or you can't vacation rental the other one? It's not clear to me. And so, first, it's not clear. Or what? There's that missing part. And two, if I own it, if I, and let's say, let's say I'm going to rent the ADU, and I paid the impact fee or did it after, built the whole thing after the fact. If I only live there two months of the year, why can't I rent the ADU as a vacation? Why does that change my... Why do I have to come here for six months in order to rent that ADU? I guess I don't understand why.
I think there's some more information on this one, and maybe when Sean comes back, we'll revisit that. I went down the road of that one, too, and I do think there's some more information that we can maybe share.
But remember, this is what people read. They don't read whatever notes you have.
Right.
They read code. And that's what this doesn't say. So, that's my concern with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Chomora. Larry, come on up.
Larry Chomora, live in Coeur d'Alene, $2,990 Nettleton Gulch. And I own a rental on Silver Beach Loop Road. And personally, I think we have too many regulations. You're not paying the mortgages. And I don't think you need so much say-so in what somebody does. I would like to have some statistics on how many people that live in a neighborhood get complaints from the people that live there about loud parties or something they don't like versus rentals, a short-term rental, how many people complain about that? Because I don't feel that there's... They don't complain when it's empty for six months. So, I think that would be fair to look at just to see who's really complaining and why. So, anybody got anything they want to say? I don't want to take up so much time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have David Growth. David?
David Growth, I live at, own the house at 719 West Woodland Drive in the Fort Grounds. I think overall, this, these thoughts represent some gentle hands around a delicate area. And it's very reasonable to me that we're, as the world changes, that we're looking at doing, putting in some regulations here. The piece of it that I want to highlight of the whole proposal is the part that says to, the purpose says, "And to allow private property owners the right to fully and efficiently utilize their property without undue regulation or interference." I've owned my house since 1983. I lived there for decades, raised my family there. And with the advent of Iron Man, then, I launched into the short-term rental occasionally. In 2006, I turned on my garage and built a three-car garage with a very nice apartment over it and have been within the, according to all building codes, and since then, have been renting that very enjoyably since 2006. I have, and then since then, I've rented both pieces of property, the house and the loft for short-term rentals. I've rented it after I retired a year and a half ago. I traveled, I rented my house for long-term and had short-term people in the loft, all different combinations of things. And then, I got a girlfriend and moved in with her, and now, I have other options that I want to be able to consider. I hear with this idea of, my two concerns about it are that, one, you have to live in the property for six months. And as was just expressed, I just, I don't understand that. That and the, you can't rent two pieces of property on this, two units on the same property as short-term rentals. Both of those, they sound fear-based to me, like the fear of the party, fear of... And I just don't see that. I wish I could, from my experience with significant hundreds of people renting, I have friends out of it, friends that I've visited in their hometowns. I have, I know of one situation where a neighbor came over and talked to the people about noise. And what happened with that? The neighbor talked to the people. I talked to the neighbor. No big blight on our relationship. We had an issue, and we dealt with it, took care of it. I fear that we're going, moving toward taking care of problems that don't exist. I know that my experience is not, does not represent everyone's experience, that I have these, almost all, very gracious people coming in, very respectful of our neighborhood and my house. I love the thought of the good neighbor policy. These feel like just real positive things to do, put that out there. This is where you are. Welcome to Coeur d'Alene. Here's how we treat each other, living in our neighborhoods. You know, what a great thing. And I think there are more things that could be done along those lines, just to make this a real successful thing. The one-night rental, it surprises me that I have people who come and stay in my apartment and the house for one night. In the apartment, they'll pay $195 a night, a $95 cleaning fee, plus VRBO service fee, plus 8% tax, and they'll come and stay for one night. And they could stay at a motel much cheaper. They choose to do that. I do some more cleaning, that's my choice. To say that most people come to Idaho and spend two days, eh, not necessarily. People come to Coeur d'Alene and pass through here and stay for one night. A lot. I, I think that's the main thing. I just wish, the last thing, the whole idea of the change and the character of the neighborhood. I fully value the, this treasure of a place that I got to raise my family in and where I live. But things do change. And, you know, and we need to, so as we change, we need to be considerate and respectful of our neighbors. But I travel differently than I did years ago because I can go stay in VRBOs and Airbnbs. I can stay in neighborhoods. I just did it in LA. I'm glad that they, I was allowed to stay in a neighborhood for a night in LA. Things have changed. And I appreciate the thought that's been given to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Nash.
Good evening. My name's Terry Nash. I'm the business development manager for a property management company called Vacasa. It's spelled V as in Victor, A-C-A-S-A.
It's on your shirt.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I thought I was looking for my name tag there for a minute. Vacasa is a property management company that exclusively works with vacation rentals only, not long-term leases. A lot of people aren't aware that we're not a locally-bound company. Our owner has a home here in Idaho, and our human resource department is located in Boise, even though we're incorporated in Portland. We came into existence or started business in 2009 with one vacation rental. And we have vacation rentals in 23 states and eight countries. It's been a huge Cinderella success story. And you're being challenged, like a lot of municipalities and counties are, with the growth of the industry, the vacation rental industry. Airbnb is a good example. They're a listing company, though, not a property management company. But they're a great example of the growth in this industry. You can expect to see that continue. We work a lot with regulations and codes. We work within HOAs. We work within counties. We helped Bonner County put into place recently the codes they have for vacation rentals. We work within the city of Sandpoint. Been working with Hillary and Sean for, yeah, the last year and a half, two years, helping put these together. It has been an arduous process. I'm actually surprised that we're still here. But at the same, at the same time, I want to encourage you today not to vote on this subject, if that's your intention, unless you're very familiar with House Bill 216. Because I believe that, and I know there's great intentions, and I agree that we should have regulations, but I do not believe that the regulations should infringe on a homeowner's rights. And I believe that what you're proposing is in violation of House Bill 216. There's a lot of good things here.
Do you enumerate what's in violation of 206, 216?
I believe that specifically, your wording in reference to duplexes and condominiums are overbearing and you're restricting an owner's rights to do what they want to with their, with their own land. In reference to condominiums, and particularly, and Tom mentioned that very effectively, they're already managed through the HOAs and their CCRs. So, this would just be redundant in that respect.
Thank you.
Apartments, I agree. You don't want, you know, a hotel to, an illegal hotel to suddenly, although I've never seen that. And duplexes, I just think that's an outright violation of a homeowner's rights to do what they, what they want with their land. I don't think it's a good idea to notify neighbors within 300 feet, which is the guideline, with exceptions up in Sandpoint. Condominium complexes, for example, are exception in Sandpoint's 300-foot guideline or rule. But I think it's an owner's business, what he or she does with their property, and it's not the neighbor's business. And it's up to the owner, what information, to protect their own privacy if they so choose so. But I thought I'd give you some information about the industry, if I could. Your typical vacation rental, our minimum stay is two nights. It's just practical business-wise. But different owners that self-manage or some of our competitors, property management companies, you'll see different lengths of night stay, anywhere from two nights to three nights or five nights. But the majority are two nights. Your typical guest, 85% are families. I want to encourage you not to manage by exception and not to manage out of fear. And I see a lot of that happening. There's a condominium complex on the water up in Lake Ponderay that's an exception to the city's 300-foot buffer zone. And they're fighting with the city council and local government because they don't want to be an exception. Because they're afraid they're going to be inundated with everybody, with vacation rentals there. And it's just not, that's just not the case. So, please, also, if you're going to enact rules or regulations, please make them enforceable. Because I think you know as well as I do and most of us in this room is, if you don't make them enforceable, then people are just going to find a way to weave or work around them. So, please, make them enforceable. I have a list here of notes. But in reference to the industry, the majority of your vacation rentals, is that my time?
Go ahead.
Would anybody like to gift me their time?
No.
May I just elaborate a little bit longer?
Yeah, go ahead and complete.
The majority of your vacation rental homeowners are generational. These families have had the homes for multi-generations, and they're trying to keep the vacation rental in their family so that their grandchildren and additional generations can use it. And part of the reason that they have this conflict is because of land, excessive land-use taxation. So, in a way, we've all created this problem. But the majority of, there are investors. It's certainly not the majority of the owners that buy a vacation rental or a home and use it as a vacation rental or a condo. And they bring in a lot of money for, they bring in a lot of tax revenue. they bring in a lot of money for, they bring in a lot of tax revenue, they bring in a lot of money for the city, and we put a lot of people that live in the city to work because of these vacation rentals. So I want to encourage you not to discriminate against investors. And again, back to the duplexes and the condos, I believe you would be doing that if you restricted those. Did you have any questions for me?
So Teri, you're in the business, your company's been in the business, you guys are all over the world.
Yes.
And so where's your helping hand here?
I'm sorry, how do you?
You've been involved in this, with these folks?
I started with Vacasa five years ago as a reservationist, and I was in operations.
With this ordinance, as this ordinance came forward, you've been involved with the staff and?
Yes.
Realtors and stuff, but your suggestions don't seem to tell us which direction to go. You're kind of telling us what not to do, and I get that, but it's, are we so unique here? You just was comparing us to Sandpoint and?
We've worked with a lot of different cities, municipalities and counties, and we even worked with Cootie County when they looked at it and decided not to, to put in codes or regulations for vacation rentals. I just would like to encourage, I believe that we should have some guidelines. I just think that you should have a light hand in doing so. And again, not manage by fear, not manage by exception, and be enforceable. You're sending out a message if you're not enforceable.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Teri, I liked a lot of the things you said regarding the owners notifying neighbors. What we're talking about here is effectively, with a non-owner occupied vacation rental is a commercial operation in a residential zone, which, yeah, I know Sean's going to get mad at me because I keep saying that, and the code, the statute now allows that commercial operation in a residential zone. But doesn't existing code for some home-based businesses allow, I mean, require that? So if you want to open, say, a daycare, and I don't know if you, Renata may know the answer to that, but doesn't existing code already allow for neighbors to be notified when someone close to them is going to be taking on another, like a business?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with daycares or that type of a scenario. I just don't think, you know, I have a long-term lease property. I've lived in Post Falls for 17 years, and I work out of Coeur d'Alene. I just don't think that anybody should, that's just my personal belief, that I don't believe anybody should tell an owner how they have to, what they can and cannot do with their land, and I don't believe it's my neighbor's business, what I'm doing with my land, as long as I'm not violating any existing regulations or HOAs or CCRs.
On that same subject, you said that it's not your business to tell, or you don't want to tell someone else how to run their private property.
Or their business.
So let's talk about the two-night stay. So who would you rather see regulating that? The private business or the government?
I think that's, that should be regulated by private business within itself. Holly mentioned a great, she made a great point. Within the vacation rental industry, it's all about clicks these days. That's what the marketing is all about. The vacation rental that's going to rent the most, and it's going to be the most popular, and it has the most visibility, is the vacation rental that's, that's looked at, it has inquiries more than others, it has reviews more than others, and it has bookings more than others. The reviews themselves, they regulate this industry. You're just icing on the cake. So please have a light hand.
So if you're going to manage a vacation rental for someone, and someone wants to come and stay one night, it should really be you telling them, no, you can't stay one night in one of my systems, one of my locations?
Well, it's not, that's not in an owner's interest to have a one-night stay because you could shoot your weekend in the foot, so to speak.
So you agree that it would be a light touch for us not to regulate how many nights someone can stay in a vacation?
I think there's not much difference between one and two. If you, if you say it's one night, then that still allows an owner to pick two nights if they want. That's just the minimum. I think you'll see most owners will pick a two-night minimum because they don't want to break up the weekend. They don't want somebody to just book privately.
But it's their decision.
It's their decision.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rita Snyder.
So my name is Rita Sim Snyder, and I have a house right here, a block away, on Front Avenue, that I've owned for 27 years, and I lived in it for 17 of those, rented it out as a permanent, long-term rental for seven of those, and now just this first year, I've had it as a VRBO. So I've been following this very closely. I chose to do it as a VRBO because of the wear and tear that my home received as a long-term rental. And so, and I had other friends who had gotten in this business, kind of told me a little bit about it, so we kind of jumped in. So as I've seen my neighborhood kind of go through this, I've noticed that my neighborhood is now quite a few short-term rentals. It's hard to find my house for all the red dots on the map. There are that many. But I also know that my neighborhood has never looked better. And I know, Dan, you're concerned about that it kind of ruins the neighborhood, but you know, every neighborhood goes through flux. And I've seen my neighborhood go up, and I've seen my neighborhood go down. I've seen my neighbors with burned-out cars, burned-out houses, garbage strewn all over the yard, and I don't see that anymore. And it's a really nice change. And so I can say, and I contest to the fact, that this is entrepreneurship at its best, at its finest. That's what our country is all about. And I've traveled all over different countries and stayed at short-term rentals, VRBOs, whatever you want to call them, Airbnb. And like I say, over in Italy, they encourage people to do this because it is a huge boon to their economy. It brings the best kind of people. It brings the best kind of money to your, to your city. I mean, this is a good thing. We should be encouraging it, not discouraging it. So I agree with the people that have spoken. We need a light hand with any code that we're going to place for VRBOs. The people that do this have made a huge investment. We have invested in our house, we have to furnish it, it's higher insurance, we pay VRBO listing fees, we pay sales tax, we pay hotel tax, we pay cleaning fees, maintenance fees, and let's not forget our property taxes, which are higher because it's not our primary residence. So, you know, it really is a niche market, and I know this is something that a lot of cities are feeling a lot of pressure, but I just want to make sure that there's not a few people complaining and we start placing code when that really isn't the reality of the business. And it is the right for a person to try to, you know, take care of the property as they see fit and use it as they see fit. So that's just, that's just, you know, my own thought. And during the, or in the code, you have the mention of the family and the number of visitors. The size of the rental dictates how many visitors you can fit by how many bedrooms and bathrooms you have. And family, you want to take that out of the code completely. You don't know what designates a family. You have, you know, the first people that stayed at my house were four Ironman athletes. They're not related. They wouldn't be considered a family, but they were the most wonderful group to stay at my VRBO. And so I would not have anything to do with family or number of residents in your code. And I really think that's, that's all, I just, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do and that you feel that the need to put this code, but I would go with a very, very light hand. And also, I can tell you that in a year, I have done about the same in my VRBO as if I listed it as a long-term rental, but that's in only renting it three months, because I really don't rent mine in the winter. So it's a lot less wear and tear, and, you know, this home is part of my retirement, so I want to keep it in as good a condition as possible and be able to have an income, income source for as long as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Gridley, I've got just a couple of questions. The last gentleman talked about what he felt might be some legal issues. I would imagine that staff has vetted this through the legal department and how it matches up with this ordinance that's coming January 1st?
Right. The House Bill 216, I think, does limit what city or county or government can do, but as far as regulating it, but it can regulate for the general welfare and safety of the community. And so if the general welfare of the neighborhood is viewed as, you know, not my VRBO, but my house next to the VRBO, I think we are well within our rights to have reasonable regulations on that.
So this ordinance then, that there's not a conflict there? That's your legal opinion on that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Then the other question, and you may not know the answer to this, is there any law for hotel rooms as how many people you can put in them? Is there, I don't, I don't know of any, but is there a law? Can you pack 40 people into a hotel room, or is there occupancy limits?
Please stump the city attorney.
Yeah, there's a fire limit.
I don't know, Mayor. I've seen the signs on the door, the back of the door, when you go in the hotel room, and it limits that, but I don't know.
Yeah, we have someone coming forward that may have an answer.
They've actually put 40 people in a hotel.
He's not an attorney, but he did stay at a Holiday Inn Express.
I did too, yes. So there is occupancy limits. It's based on the building type, the building material type, as well as the fire department sets that occupancy limit.
So it would be reasonable that if, whatever size of a vacation rental, that it would have some type of occupancy permit? Family may not be the best way to say it, but they should have some type of occupancy, similar to just a hotel room? Is that kind of a theory behind that?
Yes, and I believe staff does agree with that on some level, but then we would have to look at all of the units in our minds in the city and say, oh, well, you are a family of 12, but you only have five bedrooms. How's that work? How do you, how do you apply that fairly across the board? And that's where staff came at it from, is, is let's look at what the definition of family is. It was what we already had on the books, and we could apply easily to this. So I wouldn't let the occupancy necessarily prevent this from happening. And a question that I have is, okay, so we do it per bedroom, how do we enforce that? You know, it's really no different than the definition of family, is who is ultimately going to be doing the enforcing? You know, is it really a bedroom? You know, and it comes down to, and I heard a statement, too, of four Ironmen wouldn't be considered a family. It would be under our current code. You're allowed to have four people that are unrelated stay in a unit. You can have five if they're, if some are related and some aren't. You can have as many as you want, as long as they're all related, but when you go beyond that, it's time to rent another unit. And that's, that's where staff came from.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sean. We will move on with our public testimony. We have Ann Melborn. It's Ann, here comes Ann.
Ann Melborn, I live at 210 North Forest Drive in the Fort Grounds. We realize that vacation rentals are here to stay, but we have to realize, too, that the neighborhoods down here closer to the city core and the lake are getting the brunt of interest for vacation rentals. I firmly believe that there's a big difference between those homes that are owner-occupied and used as vacation rentals versus those that are bought strictly for an investment and has a business. Experience in our neighborhood is those that are business, bought strictly as a business as a vacation rental, are often vacant nine months of the year. And when you start multiplying that out, two to three houses on a street, you quickly get a ghost town. And that is one of the concerns. I think that there should be some restrictions, at least on a percentage of the homes in a neighborhood or a specific geographic area, and somehow, be it the number or a percentage of the total residences, because otherwise you get a very different neighborhood. Many of us now who live down in the core of the city, we've moved into single-family residential neighborhoods, and when people are running businesses, you can have new neighbors every two or three days, and you have no idea, do they belong there, do they not belong there? And it changes the whole character of the neighborhood, especially if these are homes that are not occupied, sometimes eight and nine months of the year. So I would like to see some, the city keep some control over how they're inspected, how they're, and how the enforcement issues. And on those, some of these homes that we've had problems with down there, they're absentee owners. Are you going to call Phoenix or Memphis when you have a problem and you want it resolved in 60 minutes? That has been an issue, too. I just hope that the city can find a way to regulate this and keep it so it does not get out of hand. I know there's, I would like to see the stay in the code, that if there are two homes on the, on a lot, one being the main residence, one an ADU or a short-term rental, that the owner has to be in residence six months a year. A lot of that has to do, you can't have a homeowner's exemption if you don't live in the house. And a lot of states require a certain, you have to spend the majority of your time, like six months and a day, in order to claim your state residency. So if you're wanting a homeowner's exemption and you want to stay as a legal resident of the city in that home, then you need to live in it. Thank you.
Ann?
Ann, I have a question for you.
Oh, Ann.
Hello.
So let's talk about self-enforcement. You're probably an expert on this. In the Fort Grounds, we have self-enforcement of parking restrictions. How's that working?
It's a joke.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So I wanted to make sure that I understood that if you have a house or two down the street where people are gone for a good chunk of the year, that you see that as a bad thing?
Yes. I mean, when you have, when you get up to a third, over a third of the homes in the Fort Grounds are rentals, and of that number, more and more are becoming vacation rentals and they're not full-time, long-term rentals, they're empty.
I guess I, from just kind of my?
It's fun to look out the window this time of year and say, okay, I need binoculars to find a house that's got lights on. Or it's the same porch light that's on 24/7 until the light bulb burns out.
But it frees up the parking.
No, it doesn't, because a lot of these homes, there are more residents who live in the neighborhood full-time, who do not have off-street parking, and because of all the one-way streets and the parking restrictions, there are more cars registered, legally registered to residence than there are parking spaces on the street. So when you get vacationers come and they bring all their water toys in their trailers and, there's, there's no parking.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ann. Next, we have John Redd, if I can read the handwriting.
Read all.
Read all.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I kind of came to this meeting, heard about it a little bit at the last minute. My wife and I were attorneys here in Coeur d'Alene. I'm not going to talk about, don't ask me any legal questions about the legality of the ordinance, please. Not going to talk about any of that tonight. Just kind of want to talk a little bit about, the first lady that did come up here and talked to you about this, made some great comments about the difference between vacation rentals and regular rentals. And when it comes to vacation rentals, you keep them great. Everybody keeps them really nice because there's a huge incentive to make them look good. And when you rent to regular renters, a lot of times, it's really hard to monitor those things and make sure that they stay good. You know, you can take care of them yourself, but sometimes you get your certain rent, you don't always include that, you know, the money in the rent to be able to take care of the lawn and that kind of thing, and they just don't look good. Vacation rentals all look perfect. And when we talk about vacation rentals, we're really talking about the downtown Coeur d'Alene area. That's really where we're at. And that's where you're trying to regulate what's going on here. And one of the big reasons I'm here is my wife and I, we own a duplex here in downtown Coeur d'Alene. And so you have some restrictions in there. Again, don't ask me about the legality of it, but when you're trying to put a restriction on that, we just redid the whole thing. Looks beautiful. It's been a, been a regular rental for 25 years. Never looked better than it has in the last six weeks, because we totally redid the whole thing, because we want to make it a vacation rental. And obviously, when it comes to a free-market economy, that's going to take care of it. And I understand some people here are testifying about, sorry, that's lawyer thing, talking about, you know, they're concerned that, you know, we got a ghost town here and that kind of thing. But you have, you have a lot of temporary residents anyway. People that come into town, they live here for a certain amount of the year, and then they leave. And I don't think that's a reason to really look at vacation rentals, because when it comes to vacation rentals, yeah, people come here mostly during the summertime, and they may stay vacant, but they still look nice. And people talk about the problems, I've been doing this for 25 years, the problems with being a landlord are nothing like they can possibly be with a vacation rental. We've talked to the company. I know people that own vacation rentals. It's nothing compared to the thing. It's nothing compared to the things you have to go through with regular rentals. And the one lady came up here, she testified, and she talked about how she had her place, and she ran a few years, she lived in it, a few years as a regular rental. And yeah, she's making it work as a vacation rental, because it's so much nicer, and the place stays so much nicer, and the people that come in are so much nicer. So, barring all the issues with the ordinance itself, I don't see it being a bad thing. And I think it's actually a good thing, because you look at the people that do it, and Mr. Gookin, you said, you went to one. You've been to a vacation rental? I don't know who up here, maybe you've never been to a vacation rental, but it's a great place. You go to a wedding, you know, you go to a graduation, you just go on vacation, you stay in a vacation rental. Why not our town? People want to come up here and do that. They come up here with families. They don't want to squeeze, you know, five or six of them in a little teeny hotel and eat out. We're not going to go to Coeur d'Alene because we can't find a vacation rental, okay? Because it's too expensive to just stay in a hotel and eat out all the time. They want to come and stay in a family atmosphere, because that's what we have here in Coeur d'Alene, is a family atmosphere. And the free-market economy is going to take care of that. It's not like downtown is going to turn into nothing but vacation rentals. You know, Sanders Beach is not going to be all vacation rentals. The best of the best are going to rise to the top, okay? They talk about, the real estate people talked about investors coming in. That's great. Come in here now, buy a place, make it a vacation rental. Good luck. How many are there here? It's not everybody that can do that. It's going to take care of itself. There's only going to be so many of them, and the overregulation, especially this ordinance, I just think is a problem. So, any questions? You have a legal question, but you know, I'm not going to answer it, so.
I just want to know if you had people stay at your place, sign a waiver?
Sign a waiver? No, actually, I don't.
Are you sure you're a lawyer?
I never, I am, and I've never done that, though.
Right, okay.
I never have. So, all right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Let it be known that attorney was given five minutes, and he left time on the table. How did that happen?
And Renata didn't start.
Okay, next, we have Dennis Heinrichsen. Dennis here?
I think he left.
Okay. That's the last one that I had on my list to testify. Anyone else in the audience that would wish to give public testimony? Okay? I will need to get your name on the list, if I don't already have it. Do I have your name on the list?
No.
Okay.
My name is Mary Ann Landers, and my address is 112 North Forest Drive. And I don't even want to say it's in the Fort Grounds. I've been here before, and I'm trying to come here and be very calm this time. I have a vacation rental in Mexico that I've inherited from my family, and I've listed it on VRBO and now Airbnb. We have a home that we initially had some of the pro-Iron Men stay with us, and then later, we rented it during Iron Man. We have a condo here that's on Indiana that's frequently rented for weekends. What I want to say mainly is that I've lived here for a long time, and it usually rains about eight months of the year. So, this is a seasonal destination, and it's a place that's a home for a lot of snowbirds and retirees. And I don't think the provision that you have to be in your home for six months is reasonable. We have all kinds of people that leave their home to go to Arizona or to go on long vacations when they're older. Most of our neighbors are able to buy an expensive property, and they pay high taxes for a full twelve months. I don't think it's anyone's business if your house is occupied or vacant. I have many neighbors that have multiple homes, so of course, they come here for three months of the year. I haven't heard the definition of family, and maybe someone can read that to me, because I don't know if you're saying it's someone that's married. You know, when I hear this, I feel like Coeur d'Alene must be in 1950 and not in this year. I would think that as soon as you discriminate against different people, you would get sued. I think that we have a reasonable noise ordinance at ten PM in our neighborhoods. I don't understand why people complain, on one hand, that the house is dark and empty, and then they claim, on the other hand, that they don't like to see a car parked on the street in front of their house. They don't want to hear people having fun in the summer in the yard. I think that Iron Man probably started this whole situation, and it's brought a lot of really good things. It's really improved a lot of people's income. It's been good for business, and I would like to see very little regulation of vacation rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have added to the list Will.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. I tend to be brief. I printed this occupant, or this good neighbor policy off the internet, and it has occupancy on it, and it seems to be inappropriate to be on the good neighbor policy, to have the occupancy there, and then people show up, and then they get the definition of family. My other remark as to the family requirements is that you are, by having that definition, you're excluding two foursomes of golf buddies. Thank you, that's all I have.
That settles it.
Has everyone here tonight that had wished to give public testimony, been given the opportunity to give public testimony? Come on up.
What was the last thing he said? I'll be brief.
Let me just. I signed in, but I didn't. Chad Oakland, I live at 2697 Espinosa Drive.
You didn't properly complete the form, Chad, just for the record.
Coeur d'Alene High School grad.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to kind of clear up a couple of things. I think we're kind of confusing a couple of things with this overpolicing idea. Definition of family, I think, is somebody, something already in your code, so that is, I think, outside of this realm. The definition of how an ADU is defined is already outside of this. You guys already have a definition of how that has to be, who it has to be occupied by, so I don't think, you can't confuse one with the other. Yeah, I think you'd have to go back and change your code. But I think that the biggest thing people are worried about, everything being in VRBO. I've been selling houses here for almost twenty-five years. It's cost prohibitive to buy a home for $500,000 and make it a VRBO. So, I think that the worry about us being run over by vacation rentals is not a real issue. We're going to have them, but to be able to buy a house for that much money, service debt, pay taxes, I don't think you get enough nights to be able to service that. So, that's all I have about that.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Okay, so if that is the last one, then I will end the public testimony part of that. Sean, maybe if you kind of come up and give a recap, maybe answer some of the questions and points that have been made, and then we'll try to...
All right. I just wanted to quickly thank Chad for that. That was very level-headed and a good thing to talk about for the occupancy and the ADU. They are handled outside of this code, and they refer to one another by proxy, basically. So, that was a good place to start. So, I guess I want to start first at the highest level of what I heard people talking about tonight, which is property rights. And, you know, don't invade my property rights, don't tell me what I can do with my property. There's four inalienable property rights. You have the right to buy, sell, you have the right to own property, and you have the right to exclude. Anything other than that is afforded to you by the state, local government, and that sort of thing. So, there are reasons why these things exist. If I own property next to a vacation rental, and I decided I was going to open a pig farm, those people would want some sort of regulation. So, it's a balance of the neighbors' rights as well as the vacation owners. So, that's what we're trying to achieve here, is that balance. So, first, let's see here, or second, the six-month requirement for ADU and not being clear. I've, I actually spoke with Council Lady Miller about this in length. So, the only reason that an ADU was ever even considered or allowed in the city of Coeur d'Alene was because the principal unit was owner-occupied. Otherwise, we have turned the entire community into a potential duplex land. There is no more real single-family requirement anymore. You can have an ADU with just about anything. So, the reason why it was created was for affordability, for that extra income, that sort of thing. So, staff is okay with an ADU being a vacation rental, but we do still would like to see that owner-occupied portion of it, because that's the reason why ADUs were allowed to exist and were created in the first place.
And Sean, in our discussion about that, I think you told me that there was notice to the title?
Yes.
If that exists, the owner who purchased that knows that it was built as an ADU, and part of the requirement was that the property be owner-occupied for six months out of the year, and that was part of the title when they purchased it? Is that fair?
Correct. So, when an ADU is created, there is a notice to title, and so, any subsequent buyers, upon a title check, will be informed that you have to owner-occupy this six months out of the year or greater.
Sean, before you leave that...
Sure.
Do, that's where it was made, so that you could do an ADU. So, what would it take to change it?
We'd have to modify the ADU code to change it to whatever that occupancy or that time of occupancy by an owner that you would like to see as council.
Okay.
There is obviously the availability to do that, but it won't happen tonight. All right. So, another line of thinking that I ran across that came up quite a bit was, you know, duplex, multifamily, only allowing one unit per owner, or one unit per owner on each property. So, condominiums, it was called out, and Tom was correct, each one does have its own parcel number, its airspace plot, as that's created. What was also created at that time is common ownership. That usually surrounds all of those units. So, in staff's mind, that's the reasoning behind that, is we didn't want to create those pseudo-hotels, and that we would allow one unit per owner per parcel for that ownership. So, I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. Another line of thinking was, we'll let the HOA and the CCNRs govern. The CCNRs already do govern. House Bill 216 does have some language in it that says that if you didn't restrict them prior to the passing of this, you can't go and restrict them now. So, there's, I guess, that's just for your knowledge. Another thing that I wanted to point out is, I don't know how many times I've been at the counter where someone has told me, "My HOA doesn't exist." So, they go defunct quite often around town. And so, those CCNRs, they live on, because they've been recorded forever, but the HOA may not meet ever, and they've been disbanded, and that's, you're just kind of on your own until something so bad happens that you create the regeneration of that HOA, and then they go after whatever problem that they see as a problem. And, let's see, that probably wraps it up, other than, you know, the fee portion of it. We tried to keep it as low as possible. We tried to make it upfront as possible without extra other business license and other things that you would have to apply for, and we feel like it's a low-cost ongoing. So, it's loaded upfront to create the software and the process, and to get it mapped, and to do all of those things that we're going to do with this if it's passed. And then, the ongoing ones are rather inexpensive, under a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Just a quick follow-up on that. So, what kind of city expenses are tied to that fee? What is it paying for?
It pays for the planning department to review, make sure ownership is correct, that the title reflects who is actually filling it out. It also anticipates a little bit of time for code enforcement. That's to cover possibly being called, and we kind of rolled that into police code enforcement together, but also to take a look for ones that aren't complying, as well as dealing with ones that may get out of hand. Although, I do have to point out, and this is, it's great information for both sides, is that I have gotten a couple of complaints over the last two years of vacation rentals, all of which have been in the county, none in the city. So, it seems like they're managed well right now, so...
So, it sounds like it's direct expense, and there's not a profit margin built in?
Correct, yeah. This isn't to get dollars for the general fund by any means. We're trying to just cover our costs at the bare minimum. In fact, Sandpoint, right now, is looking at raising theirs, because it does not cover their costs.
Dan, just a...
Yeah, just a side note, which Ms. Landers did make a good point. Family, our definition of family, I assume that's because we have a zone called "single family." And I think, since we're going to be addressing that in the future, Hillary might want to consider changing that language, maybe instead of calling it "single family," having another name, so that since family is so flexible these days, that we're not bound to the 1950s definition.
I would agree with that statement.
Or what it's worth.
Anything else for Sean? Ron?
Yeah, Sean, after everybody has talked tonight, do you think that this should be, this ordinance should be taken back to the Planning Commission and discussed a little bit more from what everybody has said tonight?
Professionally, I think that we have...
Let's not, we'll wait five years, but let's...
Right. I don't think that, short of going back and doing ordinance amendments to the definition of family, and in looking and actually doing some fundamental changes in the ADU code, which is going to take some time, that we really would accomplish much. I think we've looked at this from many different angles. Like Tom was saying, in the beginning, staff was, you know, we anchored the situation by saying, "Okay, here's kind of the laundry list of things that you can regulate," which we built into a code. We dialed them back, working with the Association of Realtors, as well as the causes and the public's input. I really believe that we're at a point where we can pass this and feel good about it, maybe in a couple of years. Maybe in a couple of years, we look at and review it and say, "Is there something wrong with it? You know, what complaints have we received? What do we need to tweak on it?" But I really think that it should function well the way that it's written.
So, I might add to that, too, Ron, is that I followed this through the last couple of years, and there's, all of the comments that were made tonight were great comments, but those are all comments that have been heard by the Planning Commission, the staff. I don't know that there's been any new points that were made tonight. They all made their points. Those points have been made at all of these levels. I think the Planning Commission has put a lot of time and effort into it. Staff has put a lot of time and effort to it. Right now, really, it's up to this body to sort through all of that information and come up with a product. So, I think it's time to get something, something, whatever that may be. So, all right. Any other questions for Sean?
I got a couple thoughts here. So, Sean, I'm coming away with, from what I've heard tonight, the family thing. And you said there's a process to define that or change it? Is that correct?
It would be a code amendment.
But not to, sorry.
Code amendment.
Not to this code, but...
Not necessarily to this, because it refers to it by proxy through a definition. So, the definition of family applies to all residential neighborhoods in the city of Coeur d'Alene. And so, that's why we went with that, is because it felt like it was the fairest, levelist playing field that we had.
So, is it restricting those four golfers that want to stay in a house that aren't related?
Four golfers, no. Eight golfers, yes.
Eight golfers, okay. We also talked about the ADU in relationship to living in the house, the occupancy. You said that would take a code change. Is that correct? To make that okay for somebody to...
Rent both out at the same time?
Rent both, or not have to live there for six months and one day?
Yes, you can do that through code, absolutely. It would require a change, though.
So, there's two code changes, just with the family, or you're saying the family will still work for this?
Just so I'm clear, are you directing staff to come forward with that?
I'm pondering out loud. Yeah. Checking my code here. The two-day thing, what would it take to change that to no restrictions? One day is fine.
I think you guys can make that change tonight and direct staff to update the code and allow single night stays if you want.
Okay. And then the duplex and condo thing, there seem to be some concerns on that. What say you? Is that something that's workable, from what Tom told us?
I guess staff would be comfortable in a duplex situation if council's comfortable to allow a duplex for both sides to be, but I wouldn't go as far as multifamily, because that's when you are gonna see pseudo-hotels, where you're gonna see someone who can take a fourplex, or an eightplex, or a 12-unit apartment building, and turn it all into vacation rentals. And if you do it with one-night stays, then it's essentially a hotel, is the potential. I'm not saying anyone is going to absolutely do that 100%, but the potential is there.
Sean, is a condo, say there's a 12-unit condominium, you have 12 different owners, right?
Correct.
Would that be looked at differently from a 12-unit apartment house that has one owner?
Under this current code, yes, it would be.
It would be, so...
We would allow those 12 units with separate owners. Those could potentially be all vacation rentals, the way that this is written.
Right. So, it follows individual ownership, then?
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah. So, any other questions for Sean? Okay.
Oh, I have a question, maybe from Mike, sorry.
Go ahead.
On the amending the code, the family definition, so if this was to pass tonight with that definition, or the term "family" included, and that at a later date, we took a look at the code and amended that, would it then be automatically, the amendment tie back to this ordinance?
You know, it'd be your definition of family that you adopt. I might remind all of you a little bit of history, that that's been something that council has wrestled with over the years, because you do get neighborhoods renting, or people owning homes, that they want to do long-term rental and rent to a bunch of people. And I think council has said, "Well, no, we gotta limit this in some way." So, it's, I think it's, it is a difficult question that council has wrestled with before. Just to be clear, any number of unrelated people, if you're related by blood or marriage, you know, that's kind of the Mike Kennedy rule, as many as you want in a single-family residence you can have, that's fine. But it is ongoing beyond your question, but it's something that council has wrestled with, and it kind of cuts both ways.
Well, I think a good point was made by, I think, Tom made it earlier, you know, three couples going on vacation together, which we do frequently, you know, with friends, with kids, and we rent a VRBO. That wouldn't be allowed in our city.
Yeah. There is some reality, I think, to the self-enforcement of this. If you show up and rent it, who's gonna ask you who's staying there? And so, if it's six people and they're all related to you, great. If none of them look like you and they're not related to you, you know, until somebody makes that complaint, how's that gonna be regulated? So, it's, yeah, it's a legitimate point, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Sean, we may, go ahead.
Let me make one quick point about the question. I just wanted to piggyback on what Mike just said. So, our current code, if, I guess, the logic that I see coming from council at the moment, taking that a step further, where you're allowing, to go beyond the definition of family, you're allowing people to stay multiple different occupants that are not related in an area. What the code currently handles that is, you're allowed to rent out up to two bedrooms of your house right now, for 30 days and longer, like a traditional rental. You're allowed to do that right now. Anything more than that is considered a boarding house under our current code. So, what we would essentially be doing, if we approve, what I'm hearing happening tonight, is boarding houses on a very short-term basis. So, just to put that into perspective of where it falls into our current code.
Boarding house. Okay. Doesn't sound good. So, here is where I see it now. We have an ordinance that's been placed in front of us. We've had a lot of good testimony. We've had a lot of good information. And it's up to this body right now to add, or subtract...
Or multiply.
Or approve as-is. From everything in the conversation I've heard, and the feeling that I'm getting, there might not be a lot of additions, but there may be some subtractions. Dan?
Well, I'll go first. So, when this thing first came up to us at the workshop, we heard the phrase "light touch." And immediately, I got upset with that, because light touch doesn't work. I don't think it ever works. It doesn't work with the parking down in the foregrounds. It doesn't work with a lot of things, you know, self-inspection. It's just, it doesn't, it doesn't work. And I wanted to have higher standards for the non-owner-occupied vacation rentals, because it is a business. I know, it's in a residential zone, it's a business. But, you know, that's, if you own your own home, then, fine, get a owner business, a home business occupancy permit, like I have for my business, and you're good to go. But if you're doing it at a profit, yes, it's a business. If you were renting a business, say, in a commercial zone, you would have to do more. You know, you change the business, you open a restaurant. There's inspections up the yin yang for that. There's, you know, it's accepted part of doing business. And then, I got thinking a little bit more about this. And what really hosed us up here is House Bill 216. And House Bill 216 effectively ends residential zones in the state of Idaho. And don't get me started on the legislature. Someday, I may go down there and fix that, but not now. And I, there's nothing we can do about it. So, basically, they set this in motion. So, given all that, my thought is this: If you really want a light-touch council, and you really want to respect private property rights and the rights of businesses, then let's just say, if you run a vacation rental in the city of Coeur d'Alene, you get a home occupancy permit, and you're done. And that's a $25 permit, like I pay. And you're good.
Absolutely. If council feels that way, and you vote that way.
That removes all that self-inspection stuff, definition of family. There's nothing about single night stays, that's up to the owner. It basically is the light touch. It may not work, but I think, no matter what we do tonight, this is coming back. So, I think, right now, let's go ahead and be pro-business, and just say, "You know what? We already have the home occupation permit. Get a home occupation permit, you're done. There's your vacation rental." I'd be interested in hearing opinions on that.
So, is that a motion?
Sure. Let's make it a motion. Make a motion that vacation rentals are permitted in the city of Coeur d'Alene with the application and approval of a home occupation permit. I'd also like to add that there would be an exception, that pseudo-hotels, however you wanted to find that, would be not allowed. I think they're currently not allowed under the home occupation permit, anyway.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear what everybody thinks.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
I love the word "light touch." I thought this was light touch compared to what, to other things we've done here in the city. This is fascinating to me. You know, I see things I could tweak, the family thing, the ADU on occupation, two code changes, takes some time. The two days, I can eat that, too, go to one day. And the duplex and condos, sounds like it works. So, those were the things that kind of jumped out at me. I like a light touch. I don't know if what you're suggesting would work, but then, I'm not thinking this thing is gonna be the best forever, anyway. I see it coming back, and we tweak it. But other places have done it. I don't, I don't understand the battle to create something that other places are doing, Sandpoint, and other places, and nobody's moaning and groaning about it that I know of. It just seems like this isn't unique for any place, especially us. We're evolving, and I get it. I don't necessarily like it. I live downtown. They haven't gone that far north yet.
They will.
They will. But I live next to a duplex, and I live that way, and different people live there. So, the neighborhood thing is, and I can't wait to get older, to where it doesn't matter anymore, right? But that's just kind of my thought. I like the light touch. I always thought that was gentle, was another word somebody used. I like that. It felt kumbaya, it felt good. So, I'm up for, if we can adjust this thing to accommodate these four things that I've seen, but you have an interesting approach to it.
And Woody, and my approach would be that we just don't even mention that. Those four things wouldn't matter.
Right. I get it.
That if someone wants to run their own vacation rental out of a home, whether they occupy the home or not, they just get a home occupancy permit, like the rest of us do.
Okay.
Kind of our hopes.
I'd like to get legal's opinion of Dan's motion.
Dan, or Mike, what do you think of that?
Still here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Think of modifying...
Think of, I guess, I shouldn't ask you what you think of Dan's motion, but what do you think of putting it under a home occupancy permit, and just having it as simple as Dan has laid out legally?
Legally, that works. I think you can do that. Certainly, you're the boss.
This is how our lawyer works.
Sam has pointed out, yes, we would probably have to look at our home occupation rules, and maybe make it clear that a add in there as a home occupation, a VRBO, or a homestay situation, but...
Yeah. I guess one way that you could change it, so it doesn't fall under the home occupation, could you just say, "You're required to get a permit," and that...
You have to get a permit.
Ends it there?
You know, I have a permit. It hangs on my wall. That's all it does.
I'm talking about that doesn't come under the home occupation. This would be this ordinance, so all you're required to do on a vacation rental ordinance is get a permit.
Technically, what we would be doing is modifying the home occupation ordinance, which would just allow vacation rentals as a home occupation, and that you would just apply, like I do. I mean, my, and I think, I tried to mention it earlier, and I'm sorry I didn't look up the code, because it just popped into my head while I was sitting here. And I think for some of the home occupations in the city, like a daycare up to X number of kids, you do have to notify your neighbors that there is going to be increased traffic, because people are gonna be dropping off kids. The home across the street from me had one, because they had a business in there. The guy cut hair. So, you know, it was a home occupation permit. He cut hair in his house. And so, it would be kind of the same thing. There's a number on the permit, so you would put that permit number on the adds. So, it's already taken care of in a lot of the code. And I think that would just be the easy way to do it. We've already set the price of that permit. I think it's $25 a year.
Amy, did that answer your question as to whether it could fit in that?
Yeah. I mean, I wish I had more information on, you know, what our home occupation rules, ordinance looks like, you know, before...
Right. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm not the expert in home occupations as well, but I do know that a home occupancy, or a home occupation license requires that you live there. And you cannot have any sort of, you can't have any employees either, unless you get a special use permit that defines the numbers of employees that you can have in a residential zone.
Well, that sucks.
We could change it.
You guys can fix it.
All right, something else. Dan?
This is a complex situation, and actually, and I'm for the light touch. And I think, actually, what we're being presented with, I think, is a good combination of light touch. You know, in this case, Dan, I think that what you're talking about is basically no touch. And I think that the, when I look at this, and with the input I've had, I mean, some folks who want to, yeah, really go down, I mean, are biased towards that direction, and let, you know, kind of free market and all of that. But when I think of private property rights, you know, it's, I guess, kind of in the eye of the beholder, it's, when I think about, when we're talking about residential neighborhoods, that the free market and capitalism and all of that isn't necessarily the main driver that I'm after, you know? And I think that the individual private property rights of the neighbors, and maintaining that neighborhood, also have a, well, probably a higher priority, in my personal opinion. There's been a lot of time and effort put into this. I would be more for starting with it, you know, one night versus two, whatever, but I think I would be for going with it as-is, and so that something gets going. Because as I understand it, part of our whole point is that there is no, I mean, they really aren't technically permitted now. So, I mean, we need to fill that void somehow. And I trust the work that's been done by the staff and Planning Commission, and you've got to have a starting point. So, I think that's probably a reasonable starting point.
Kiki?
I think that we're kind of at a point where we need to move forward. The House bill is gonna go into effect, and we need to take some action to make sure that people are doing this, are doing something legally. I don't think anybody in the city wants to be operating one of these and feel like they're doing something illegally. So, I think we need to take some sort of action. I agree with the light touch. I'm fine with the one-day stay, and let the neighbors regulate what they need to do. These other ordinances that we're talking about can be addressed at a different time. And when we decide that that needs to happen, it'll affect the guts of this particular one. The home occupancy thing, I love creativity, great idea, but I think we'd be just taking all of these elements and trying to modify that code in order to make it work. And so, it doesn't make sense to strike this, the work that's been done here. So, I, with the change from two to one, and the way that we've clarified how duplexes can be used, I think the work that's here is good enough to move forward for me.
Okay. Does anyone have any more discussion on the motion that we have on the table here? Because if we don't have any more discussion on this, then we'll vote on this, and if this doesn't work, we'll move on to...
Could we have the motion ready again?
Renata?
I will give it my best try. A motion by Gookin, seconded by McEvers, that vacation rentals are approved through a home occupation permit, with the exception of pseudo-hotels.
Would you like a roll call? How would you like to do that, Renata?
Just do voice.
Whatever your pleasure.
You know, let's do a roll call.
Okay.
All right, let me withdraw my second. That'll make it real simple.
Is that what you wanted to do?
Just kidding.
Okay. Roll call, please.
All right. Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Miller?
No.
McEvers?
No.
Gookin?
No.
No?
I can vote against my own motion.
Just double-checking. English?
No.
So, that would be a no, right, Renata?
Correct.
Okay. So, I think what we need to do here, I think that everyone desires the light touch. We need to decide if it's gonna be Michelob Light or Bud Light, right? So, I think there's, I think there's some general... So I think there's, I think there's some general consensus that we take some things out. Maybe it's the, maybe we go instead of the two days, the one day. Maybe it's the occupancy. So I think we need, in order to make some progress, in order for us to get some things done, let's start throwing out some things that we may need to change. Or if, Kiki, you had a list of things, maybe you want to even throw out a motion. You could even do that.
I was getting ready to do that.
That would be enjoyable.
I was going to make a motion that we, but I don't have the number of the resolution in front of me.
Let's make something up.
171037.
That we approve Resolution 171037.
No, move to modify it first.
Are you telling me what to do?
Well, because the motion is actually to dispense with a rule and read it. So you probably want to modify it first and then dispense with a rule and read it.
Because we're in that order.
Yeah.
It's an ordinance.
Okay. So let's make a motion to modify the ordinance to read that it is the minimum one night, the minimum stay is eliminated completely, and that the clarification in the language regarding duplexes, as discussed, is included. And that, well, the other things we've already cleared up, that they're already addressed in other codes. So those would be the only two items.
Kiki, could you clarify the duplex language and what we mean there?
I believe that the duplex of condos needed to be clarified to say that per parcel, duplexes would have, not be restricted to one short-term rental.
Because right now duplexes, because they're, Sean, you can just nod your head, but duplexes are, would be considered one owner, so you'd be allowed one of the duplexes to be a vacation rental. A condo, since there's individual owners, you can have individual vacation rentals.
Right, and something we just, part of our code deal with the number of units in it, is single-family duplex falls under something separate than multifamily. So multifamily is at that third unit on the parcel and up. So when staff said that we'd be comfortable with a duplex, that is where we draw the line, is through the code, I believe, you can make the motion to the effect that single-family and duplex would be allowed, but multifamily would not. And that would cover anything from the third unit on.
From a third unit on, okay. And that if an owner owned in one HOA, whether it had in that criteria or not, but if they owned multiple duplexes, they would have one short-term rental permit available per each duplex. Or would one owner only get one short-term rental? This is where I got confused with it, so I need to clarify. If they had, if they owned four duplexes, they would only be allowed one short-term rental in eight...
Are they all on the same parcel, or are they separate?
They're separate parcels in the same street, but one person owns them all. Because right now, it says per person, per unit.
Right. So I'd probably have to lean a little bit on the legal department at this point because I believe the way that it calls it out, I'm going to have to find it in here. Might have to give me a moment.
Could you describe what it is you're trying to get to?
Right.
She's trying to determine, so if you own, let's say you own four duplexes, right, as an owner, how many of those duplex units can you operate as a vacation rental? So can you do all, so if you have four duplexes, can you do all eight units?
Sure. That's what I think we heard.
Or four units. Or if you're the owner...
Right, four or eight, but...
Yeah, there's eight addresses in four duplexes. So of those eight addresses, you own them all, do you get one short-term rental out of eight, or do you get four, or do you get eight?
Get them all.
You can define it that way if you want, but my understanding, and I haven't found it in here quite yet, is that it sounded like it had a project. So the language that I remember reading in here was if they were all done together as a project, you would still only get the one.
I think it's page four.
Yeah, I made it to page three. False it.
Well, if the duplex, right now, the duplex, if it's on a separate parcel, you can only rent one of those. If it, what you're saying is if you have a duplex on a lot, you want to be able to rent two of them, right?
No, I want to clarify what it's saying. If you owned four duplexes, but, and they're separate parcels, you get four rentals in, you get one rental in each of those four. Is that correct? That's what I want to make sure that it reads.
That's the way it is now. So a duplex on a separate parcel, you get one. You've got a separate parcel next door that you own with a duplex, you get one.
Okay.
And on down the line.
So that's good, that's what you're...
That's good.
Okay.
That's clear.
Wait, no, 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 no.
So what I'm doing is a lot of these, a lot of these things that we discussed tonight, and it's important to walk through that because it becomes a little unclear by the end of this, what is it that was our intent and what does that language say? So that's what I want to make sure that we're clear.
And so my question to Mike would be, and I can read this into the record, it says for properties with more than one dwelling unit, which is a duplex, including multiple lots developed as a single parcel. That's where I get a little wrapped around the axle, and I think you did too. One dwelling unit per property may be used as a short-term rental at any time. So I think we need some clarification from legal and your motion to be sure that what we're contemplating is accurate on all of us.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Did we get that clarification? Because I'm not clarified.
Yeah.
So a duplex, so I own one duplex under your motion. How many of, could I rent one of them, or can I rent two of them as a vacation rental?
If you own one duplex, you can rent one of them as a vacation rental.
Okay, so then it doesn't matter how many more I own, I could only rent, I can only...
Well, according to that language that said, if you went out and developed a piece of property and you put four, three duplexes on it, but you owned it by yourself, you could only get one.
Because it depends on if it's in one parcel.
How you developed it. The language said how you developed it. Even if they were separate parcels, but it said if they were developed as a project, you would only get one in it. That was what I was trying to clarify.
And Kiki, how would that be enforced?
Just like the rest of this, it's all up to the owner, so it's...
So do it anyway.
So, okay, Kiki, you didn't finish your motion, though. You've got other parts of that, don't you?
Did we get that part cleared?
So duplex, you can rent one of the two units as a vacation rental. That's true.
I think it needs to be modified to say regardless of how the project was developed. I think if that's taken out, then it's clear. Mike?
So you're saying a parcel that's combined that has multiple duplexes on it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if one parcel has multiple duplex, that would be considered to be multifamily and not a duplex. If you had eight...
If there's separate parcel numbers, it wouldn't, would it?
No, separate parcel numbers, they'd be duplex. But if you have eight two-unit buildings on one parcel, then that would be a multifamily.
Then that would be one. But if you developed the project and each one of those duplexes had a separate parcel number, but you owned it, the language now says you only get one short-term rental.
Mike's shaking his head. Can you? You're shaking your head.
Well, no, I think it's confusing because, or it's getting confused the way we're talking about it. If it's on a separate parcel, right, and you've got a duplex, you can rent one. What you're suggesting is if you take your parcels and put them together with multiple duplexes on them, then you would be limited to just one on that. And I think that is correct. And I think it's probably, and maybe Sean can speak to that, it's probably aimed at, at that point, you've got an apartment complex, or that, you know, you've created an apartment complex, or a multifamily housing situation.
Mr. Mayor?
Sean's going to come out and clarify that.
So when I was speaking of duplex versus multifamily, multifamily is three units attached and above, so they have to be attached to each other. So that's the way current code is. So, and it's also important to note, too, and I don't think this has been brought up yet, but there's a difference between a tax parcel and an actual parcel. So there's a number of places around town that have multiple parcels that are basically hooked together for tax purposes, so they only get one tax bill even though there's multiple parcels tied together. But the city still views them as separate. So I just wanted to make that clear as well.
So if the city views them as separate, then it's one per structure?
Uh...
Per building, per duplex of two homes. They get one short-term rental.
Well, right, it depends. So because we repealed the pocket housing ordinance, now to build anything higher than a duplex, if you wanted two duplexes on a property, you'd have to subdivide it to get a duplex on one and a duplex on another.
Okay.
So there's, and before, where pocket housing would allow multiple units on a parcel based on its density, they could be landlocked, they didn't have to have frontage. So things have changed a little bit there. So I guess I wanted to clarify and then ask council, you know, is, what are we looking for here? If there's four duplex lots all side by side, and you have four duplexes, is your motion requesting that all of those duplexes under a single ownership could be all vacation rentals? Is that what you're shooting for?
No.
No, okay. So I guess we need to define...
But if one person owns all of them, then they should have the ability to have four, if that's, I don't want to restrict a person who wants to buy multiple duplexes. If that's what we're trying to say here, is that we're trying to stop them from building a hotel. I'm not sure how that would happen if half of their duplexes were not allowed to be short-term rentals, but the other half were, because there's one in each building.
Right, and I guess that depends on, you know, future ownership and the ability for those properties to change hands. Because they're already subdivided like that, you could sell the duplex to someone else, they could do what they wanted to, they could live in one side and rent the other out long term, or, so I guess it's, the way the code's currently written, yes, they could own those four lots with four duplexes. Each one of those lots could have one side of the duplex be a vacation rental, the other side not.
And that's your clarification of what the current code says?
Of this proposed code, yes.
Proposed code says.
Okay, so go, Kiki, watch...
And that's what I was, that's the clarification I was looking for. So if that's the clarification of what it says, not that it's restricting the ability for one owner, then I'm good with the way it's written.
So go ahead, let's, once we complete your motion, see if we get a second, and then we'll move on from that.
All right, so the completion of my motion is the approval with the change to eliminate the minimum number of stays.
And nothing, no changes on the, so the only change that's made to this existing one is to eliminate the stay requirement?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it again for discussion.
Wow. Okay, so a motion and a second to take the ordinance as is, modifying, eliminating the stay requirement. Further discussion?
So Sean, when you talked about the parcels, the duplexes, why would it be, why would that be any different than the ADU thing, where somebody has to live in it, but they can only rent the ADU? Same thing with a condo or a duplex.
It largely comes down to lot size. And so a single-family house requires 50-foot of frontage and 5,500 square feet in most of our zones. Some of them require a little more when you get up to R3, R1. But a duplex in an R12 requires 7,500 square feet, or 7,000 square feet, sorry, for a duplex. So it's a bigger lot to accommodate that extra unit. And so with an ADU, you can have essentially what Chad and I lovingly refer to as a detached duplex and have that extra unit on there. It's limited in size based on the floor area of the principal house, but it allows that other unit on there with a lot size that doesn't meet the minimum requirement for a duplex. That's the difference. So the lot size is bigger for a duplex.
But the rule is the same. You're saying on a ADU, we're saying that when you buy it, you have to live in it to rent the ADU. And now we're saying on a duplex, you have to live in one side to make the other one a rental unit.
No, it can be a long-term.
It can be a long-term.
Long-term.
Right.
Okay, got it. That's what I was looking, trying to understand the difference.
In a duplex, but not in an ADU.
But not to short terms.
That's the way it's currently written, proposed.
So further discussion on this motion?
Okay, just, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to support this because this discussion is giving me a headache.
That's it.
Well, to be a PETA here, what I would prefer is that we went through the motion line by line and struck what offends us. Because a generic motion along these lines, I think, is just too vague, and I would prefer it that we were in the driver's seat and we actually struck the items from the ordinance as opposed to having it modified at a future date. In fact, I don't even know if legally we can do this. I think we have to get the language right tonight, which means this motion for it to be effective has to be specific with regards to what in this code is being cut or clarified.
But it is, though. All she did was just strike the days. That's it. She left everything else the same.
So basically, her, so she's not talking about, she's not talking about the definition of duplex and multifamily housing in here.
Nope.
She's not talking about the definition of family in here.
Nope. That's all code stuff.
Well, there's more I'd like to cut.
So, but her, Kiki's motion...
Basically, she's cutting out of the definition section in subsection F, she's cutting the last sentence, which says one-night stays in short-term rentals are specifically prohibited. So that's the effect of her entire motion.
Yeah, that's it. And everything else stays the same.
But I'd also like to see more cut. I think that a lot of the other things here are just too much government.
Yeah.
And I would like to see the, if we can cut more government out of this, then we can lower the fees.
So if this fails, then you can come back with that motion.
All right.
So, roll call, please. Renata?
Okay, Eddinger?
I abstain.
That's not fair.
You can't do that.
Okay.
You can always come back and say one way or the other if you want to.
Pass, you say pass.
Okay, next.
Okay, Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
I abstain. No, yes.
Gookin?
No.
And English?
Yes.
So motion carries.
Okay. So I'd be interested to see what we get.
Tried to get less government for you. I'm sorry I failed.
So we'll move on to the next motion to go to executive session.
I'd like to move...
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, so you made the motion to amend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you wanting to also approve the ordinance as amended tonight?
Yes, yes. So tell, just give us a little direction, and we're getting a little rummy up here.
Sorry, so your next motion on the table is for someone to dispense with the rule in the reading of Council Bill 171037.
Okay, so we need some action on that.
So I'd like to move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 171037, by title only.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? So Renata, if you could read that title.
Sure can. Council Bill 171037, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Adding a New Article 10, Short-Term Rentals to Chapter 17.08 of the Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code, Providing for the Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Providing for Severability, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English? English?
Yes.
Motion carried. Looking for the next motion.
Motion to adopt Council Bill 17-1037.
Do we need to say as amended, Renata?
You can.
As amended.
Okay, Renata.
So we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
No.
English?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Does that cover all of our bases there, Renata?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to enter into executive session under Code 74206 to consider hiring a...
Subsection A.
Official. Subsection A.
Second.
And also subsection D.
And D. Thank you.
So motion, we have a second to that? Amy, do you second that?
Yes, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session.